Where's Terry?
We're blending Terry.
Well, I thought I blended Terry.
Terry?
Record twice.
Stop twice.
Record twice.
All right, you're good.
None of us want Terry to talk.
Shall we stop it?
No.
Bonnie, can you tell us for when does it actually start?
Definitely.
I always get it out too long.
It's like a back and forth.
I'll do it anyway.
But I just, it'll be okay.
I was really excited Terry was sitting on this side because she can.
Oh, okay.
I already started.
Got it, okay.
I have to be reminded.
You don't want to become obsolete, Terry.
I'm not sorry.
We're gonna have somebody sit there next week. Throw everybody off.
We're such creatures of habit. We all have our assigned seat even though they're not even at all assigned. Everybody ready? Here we go. Welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for being here with us today. Today is Tuesday, February thirteenth. It's four thirteen P M. Where convened is the Provo City School District Board of Education, and we are meeting at two eighty west, nine forty north in Provo, Utah. We are going to begin with a roll call. I'm Rebecca Nielsen, Board President.
Jennifer Percher, Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Lisa Boyce, Board Member.
Meg Van Wagenen, Board Member.
Mike Joiner, Student Member.
Will Widener, Student Member.
Gina Hales, Board Member.
Karen McKeen, Board Member.
Devin Daly, Director of Accounting.
Wendy Goss, Student Member.
All right, thank you so much, and welcome to everyone here with us and online. Um, is there a motion today to start our study session?
I move we begin the study session.
Thank you so much. Motion made by Board Member, uh, Hales. Is there a second?
I second.
Oh, wow. Okay, we're going to make, because I made eye contact with her first, so second by Board Member Van Wagenen. We're now in our study session, and we're going to begin today with a board handbook training by me. So, we put together a new schedule recently, um, and so to, on today's schedule, we are going to be going over, we're starting at the very beginning and making our way through the handbook, the intro, the board mission statement, and the legal status. That's found on page five, um, of the board handbook. Um, the introduction basically states that the handbook is here as a tool for our benefit. So, as board members, if you feel like there's anything you need clarification on, please remember that the board handbook can be a resource for you to find answers you may need on certain topics or questions. Um, and should be extra helpful for new board members as well. Um, as far as our board mission statement goes, we're working on redoing all of that, but we're gonna go over it anyways because there's things of value in here, so let me go ahead and read this to you. "It is the mission of the Provo City School Board to partner with parents and community in order to cultivate highly effective learning environments where all students engage, think, and learn in order to contribute, create, and innovate for a lifetime. Additionally, the board will exercise all its statutory powers, obey all relevant laws and regulations, and conform to the highest ethical standards." So, it's actually pretty packed, full of lots of good things in there, but I just kind of wanted to highlight that, um, that we are partners with the parents and the community to cultivate these great learning environments for students, um, which is what I think all of our, what really all of our hopes and dreams are for all of our work here on the board. Um, and I feel like at the end too, that it talks a little bit about our, um, the fact that we will exercise our statutory powers and obey relevant laws and regulations, which actually leads me into the third section of the training today, which is our legal status. Um, and that is basically that, the, let me just read this to you. "The Utah State Legislature assigns to each locally elected Board of Education control of the public schools in its district." So, that's, um, what, uh, by statute, we are in control of. Um, so we are technically a political subdivision of the state, and we get our powers from the state constitution and acts of the legislature. So, it's a good reminder for us to remember that we get our, our responsibilities and our, and our powers from state statute. And so, I guess that's also a really great place for us to refer to if we have any other questions or, um, things that we need clarification on. Statute is, is the law, so that can be the final say. So, any questions or any comments on anything there? Okay, great. Um, next time, it will be Jennifer, and she'll be talking to us about our responsibilities, so get ready for that. Okay? All right, thank you so much for listening. Um, our next item on our agenda is item number five, student travel requiring board approval. I assume that, give that to you, Wendy.
Yeah, so we have TPU High School and also Centennial Middle School that are going to, um, the Science Bowl. Does that, yeah, they qualified because they're amazing. Um, and so they're going to Washington, D.C. It's to be noted that they have to miss more than the traditional two days of school because this is not something that was in your control, but it's something that you should be super proud of and excited, and we're super excited. So, do you guys have any questions for them?
Any questions for me? That was my one thing. I was looking at the three days, and I was like, eh. But then I looked on the calendar. There's a Friday and Monday, so there's not really much I figured you could do about that, so.
Can you just tell us a little bit about, like, how they qualified and then what their experience is going to be like while they're there?
Sure.
Oh, wow, you guys.
Do you want to stand up so we can see? And actually, for the cameras, for YouTube, it's actually best if you don't mind standing on that end if you're okay.
Oh, shh.
All right, well, we, um, we started the Science Bowl. How many years has it been, Linda? You should come up here. Um, it's, if you, a few years back, like, five years back?
Seven.
Seven years, and then COVID was in the middle of all that time, and they didn't have the national competition, so we didn't realize this was even a possibility when we went to regionals. So, we, we go to the regional competition, and, um, we win the regional competition, and then they get an email saying, hey, you guys are invited to D.C. It's a free trip to D.C., and so we're like, oh, we're gonna take all of our team. So, anyway, Science Bowl is a competition program that's run through the Department of Energy on a national level, and they have regional competitions all over the, the country. And then they take the winners of all the regional competitions, and they let them compete in Washington, D.C. So, it's a kind of a fun thing, and it's completely sponsored by the Department of Energy, so they pay for everything. We're talking millions of dollars go into this program, so why not take advantage? So, it's not big in Utah yet at all. We know that. So, um, we're trying to help grow it and make it a bigger program because it's good for kids. It gives kids a little niche. You know, kids who are interested in science, they're interested in competition. We have a lot of kids that are into gaming right now, wouldn't you agree? And so, why not steer some of that gaming into something scientific that will help grow their STEM knowledge and their STEM experience? So, that's the, the purpose of Science Bowl is, and it gives them a place to find friends, to have a social, um, interactions with people. So, it's a good place for a lot of kids, yeah.
How do you determine which five students get to go?
Well, we have, Linda and I teach two, we have it as an elective. Brooke has been very supportive to make it like a class. So, we have, how many kids in each class? Like, I have thirty-seven in my class, and she has.
Yeah.
The, the five were the winning teams.
Yeah.
So, each team have, is, is the size five?
So, regionals let us bring four teams. So, we took two cla, two, two teams, two teams of five. So, we took four teams to regionals. And then only, in a middle school, I don't know what it was, in high school. An A team and a B team. So, in the middle school competition, there was only one other, sorry, that's how we won. But there was only one other school that even came. So, they had the regional competition with five teams. Four of them were our teams. So, so anyway, but the one team, that, then we had a competition. And so, the winning team of that competition gets invited to Washington, D.C.
That's great.
So, that's how that worked, and we're just happy to go along for the ride. It's really fun. They're, they're good kids. They're really smart and fun, and we're gonna have good experiences.
I think it'd be cool to add that for the last three years, it's been online, and the kids haven't been able to go to D.C.
I did mean to say that, yeah, that's why.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. I think that's why it was a surprise. We didn't know.
They did it this way before COVID, and then after COVID hit, they only took the top ten teams in the nation. And so, this is the first year back where they're taking a hundred and twenty teams.
Yes.
So, yeah.
We're, we're super excited.
Yeah.
So, is it like a tournament style then?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's very, very competitive. You guys should go Google. You should definitely Google, um, National Science Bowl, like, um,
Competition.
Competition tutorial videos or whatever. And you can see the competition, and they are super, super, like, strict and competitive, and it's, it's a fun, but it's a really fun environment.
Are there scholarships available if they were to win, like, at the national level?
We're so new. I don't know. I don't know. I, I mean, yeah, we should have had Rachel Arval here. She's, she knows a ton about it, but. Oh, the Camachos. Does anyone know the Camacho Twins? They're really, the Camacho, um, what, what's her first name?
Melinda.
She really started this.
Yeah.
It was really her. She brought it to Centennial. It grew, and that's what made it a class, so really, it's the Camachos that did all of this, I think. We're happy, we're, we're happy they did because it's really good for kids. It really helps.
It's a great science enrichment for these kids that love science and math and, you know, chemistry and physics, and they, they, they choose different areas of study in our classes, and they become experts in those areas, and they have to know those five areas, whichever area they chose through high school. You know, for the middle school, I'm sure the high school has to do it at a higher level.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's great.
Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, that was basically both. We're, both trips. That covers both, right? Okay.
There, um, sorry, there is one thing. So, the male and female chaperone. Because we're going together, we're hoping that's okay. We have two female advisors, but they have a male advisor, so we figure we can help each other out. Because there's only nine students total between the middle school and the high school will be on location together. Is that, that's the only question I have either.
Sometimes, um, yeah, you're working together as one group, right?
We have to have male and email, so here we go.
Yeah.
You have a total of three chaperones, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you. Did Aurora make it?
Yeah, let us know how.
We would love to hear it. Yes, we keep it posted. Did Aurora make it?
I don't. We've been trying to call her. I can't cut through her phone. And she said last week that she was going to be here in the steering condition. She had a, so I don't.
Yeah. I don't know if her plane just happened to land it. I have no idea, so.
Voicemail, yeah.
Okay, well, um, if it's okay that we really move up a lot of these other items, then.
We're doing really well on the time.
I know. My gosh, we're staying on track so well. Okay. So, um, construction update is.
Chad's not here either.
Okay. Well, then we'll go down to, uh, item number eight, which is policy review. We'll start there. We'll, we'll go all over the place today, but that's all right. We'll figure it out. Um. Bonnie, can I take over the screen in front of that?
Okay, so, we talked last time about, um, the inclusive learning environments policy. We have received some feedback. We, we kind of walked through some different, um, language. And so, what is submitted on board docs was the final language that we had agreed upon last time. I did want to, um, share a feedback that was submitted to me that they wanted, that they thought might be helpful in adding to the definition of schools as public forums. So, the, it's just this addition at the end that, um, some individuals wanted considered. Speech displays and actions in the classroom should be in accordance with the district objective of a safe, respectful, inclusive, and kind environment for all learners and educators. The rationale being that it's telling you all of the things that you can't do in a classroom. Should we not also have something positive? Um, and I thought that was a great recommendation. Wanted to bring that, um, forward to you. So, if you, um, would like to adopt, if you decide to vote on the policy and adopt that, and you want to make that specific change, um, we could certainly do that. The other question that has been, um, presented to me is what does the training look like for administrators and teachers? So, that will be developed for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year by district leadership, and will have to be in accordance with any new legislation that passes. That's being discussed, um, in the state legislature. That might be actually a little more restrictive. And then we would deliver that to our school principals, and then provide principals with materials to get that to teachers to work with them. In the meantime, we would just work with teachers on an individual basis through our administrators and through our school leadership team. So, just the next steps. You have option one, to approve the policy as is. You can, option two would be to consider other additions, um, including the addition of that schools as public forums. Or if you wanted to, you can also, option three, wait until the legislature acts on the current bill by stern quest, and then we're, and we just work with administrators and teachers individually and revisit it after the legislative session. So, any questions or?
Does anybody have any kind of pulse on option three and what is destined to happen there?
It will likely pass, in my opinion.
You think what will?
I, I think that the bill will likely pass, and so.
You?
I'm guessing it will pass. I don't know what it will look like when it passes. Um, I would suggest we go with option two because why wait? Like, we can make adjustments to the policy, and I think the policy is good as it is. We can make those adjustments, but I think just waiting is in my opinion not the best policy.
A lot of work into this.
Right, and people have given so much feedback, and I think it's a good policy. I like it better than the law, but, um, I think it's a good policy.
I feel like the legislative, like, the outcome will, will help us determine type of trainings and, right? And follow up like that, but this policy stands, I think, in compliance with.
I agree.
I like option two.
Like, option two as well? I, is, am I getting?
No, that was gonna just be like one question was like, what's the difference between option two and three, waiting versus? I don't see that there's a huge difference. And the, the policy committee's done so much work on this that.
I think having a policy in place would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I say we be proactive and set the tone for our district.
I agree.
It ca, is this one that came out of committee, like, pretty much split vote?
Yes.
Six, five?
I believe so.
It does say right now it is, um, on the calendar for the House third reading, which means the House will be voting on it coming up.
So, if anyone wants to contact, there's.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we'll go ahead and finally take a vote on this one today, which will make, that's exciting. So, okay, so we'll plan on voting on this in our business meeting later this evening.
And I really like that addition.
Was that the, suggested?
Um, it was the, um, one of the parents, Jon, Johnstono?
Justino?
Jessica.
Oh.
Jessica Johnstono.
Jessica.
Yes, good. She was the one, she, um, emailed it to me. We have met, kind of talked through some things, and then she said, I really feel like it's always telling us what we can't do. Don't we wanna have an idea of what we could do? So, I really appreciate it, but, um, that they followed up. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Jessica.
Yeah.
Cause she's funny.
Yeah, she's great.
All right, I will stop sharing.
Okay, and, um, then Michelle is gonna talk about language policy. I don't know what to predict, so it's on Bonnie.
Um, do you want the document up there or you? Sure, that's, you know, it can be, it doesn't have to be. So, you have, um, the first read of our language access policy. This really is written entirely based off of House Bill three oh two, language directly from there. We didn't modify much of it. What we've been working on behind the scenes are the procedures and the how-to put into place all of those things. So, I really am just here for any questions that you might have after reading this first draft. We have, I also had Bonnie include what we have been working on as procedures. I don't know that all of this will eventually go into procedures formally. I just wanted you to all be aware of all the things we've currently done in the last really three weeks, two or three weeks. We have a website. We have translation going. We have a lot of things that we've put into place just in the last three weeks, so. Um, anyway, so what questions do you have?
So, this is a brand new policy, correct? So, it's not like we're revising.
Correct.
So, it's a brand new policy, and it's based on eight three three oh two from last session?
Two sessions ago.
Two sessions ago, okay. Were we directed that we needed to do this, or is this just part of our updating?
No, we should have done it.
We should have done it.
Yeah.
But we, did the state come down and say you guys are out of compliance?
No. No, 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 no. It also is attached to Title III federal reg, regulations. It's not as explicit in Title III. It's more general in saying that languages should be available to parents, but it doesn't give directives in the Title III law. So, we've always semi, I, we've done the best that we could to follow that and helping schools do that. But state law really explicitly lays out exactly what needs to be translated and provided to parents. So, it's, it's a good thing for us. It's, it's a lot of work behind the scenes to get the resources provided, but we've been able to do a lot just in the last few weeks, so.
How did your trainings go yesterday? Were they yesterday? Did you have? I was looking at here, and it's like February twelfth.
I think we're ahead of schedule.
Uh, which one are you?
I was just looking at, just wondering like how this went.
Yeah, how our committee meeting went. We actually have submet before that, and our, yeah, so, good. Our subcommittee, yeah.
Qualifies you as a translator?
Yeah, yeah, so we're working on all of those.
That's great.
The state has given guidance on those, so we're really following them. They've also put together a program. What we really found out in the last month is because of the massive advancements in AI, we really don't have, um, and, and how good AI is, um, we don't have a huge need to have a third-person translator anymore. And we've been experimenting with several programs and devices in the school. There's a new device, maybe some of you have seen it, called Timekettle. Franklin's social worker is using it a lot. All the schools have access to them. They're little earbuds. And it's, your phone works like a server, and like, you wear an earbud, and I wear an earbud, and we put the app on their phone. And I can talk in English, and Rebecca can listen in her own language in real time. It translates in about point five seconds. And I can also have the text on my phone happening at the same time. So, she can read it, and she can hear it. We have it in classrooms all over the district with our new, the country students. I got a grant for it at the beginning of the year, so we have students using it. We have teachers using it. We, there's little kinks and things we're working out, but it's going really well, and social workers are loving it because they don't need a middle person anymore. Parents are really, really loving it. We have all sorts of things, learned all sorts of things. We have wipes everywhere. We have all sorts of things so that people feel sanitized and safe, but, um, that's one tool that's really, really going well. It actually will save us significant amount of money if we get a lot of these in schools versus paying for translators. Translators are much more expensive. In fact, I was telling Wendy the math on it was just like mind-boggling of like, if we just bought one of these for every teacher, we would save, over the long run, hundreds of thousands of dollars in the cost of translating and translators. Um, so that's one tool we're already using and promoting heavily and training people on. The second one is, I don't know if you're familiar with a new one. It's called Microsoft Translate. Microsoft just has released an app that's all very similar. You just don't need an earbud for it. It's just voice to voice through your phone and translates also in real time. So, I can put my own iPod in, like, if I'm at a, like, the Dixon meetings that were just held. We have those translators, right? The difference would be if we just had, we could have parents scan in a QR code. It goes right to a website. They put in a code, and you could have yours in Russian. You can have yours in Spanish. You can have yours in whatever language you need. And Wendy would just have her phone at the front talking, and we all hear in the language or read in the language or hear in whatever language we need through this app. And we're testing it everywhere in real time and real groups. So, cost-wise, I don't know that it will be as much as I even predicted, even what it would have been a year ago, and even honestly six to eight months ago because of the AI availability now. Um, our website, if you want to just look really fast on our website, if you go to provo.edu, and in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see a little, a little world button. That's new, and when you click on that, you'll see like gajillions of languages, and we'll just pick one, and the whole website translates. Shauna and Caleb actually put all of that into play, what, a couple months ago?
Oh, I didn't.
They did all that.
That was awesome.
It's amazing, and everything translates except for PDFs, which they're working on, getting those. They have to be web-based. You can't translate a PDF in, in these apps. If you also click on that little globe and see at the top it says, request a translator, so click that, and that we know it takes you to a translation page. It defines the difference between an interpreter and translator. And then you can see, if you click one of those forms, whether you're a parent or an employee, or this is the parent slide, excuse me, and you can request it. There's a form. It gets sent to a separate translation email, and we're monitoring that in our office. This has been live for two weeks now. We haven't received a single email. That's okay, though, because we're just, we're getting going with like what's going out now that it's from live feed with all the people watching. I'm sure our emails will be flooded. So. But when they get, they'll get an email back from our department saying, thank you, an automatic reply. Thank you for reaching out. You'll hear from us within two to, two days on how to support your needs. Again, almost all, by law, all of the documents, not all. We have to establish which documents will be translated for parents, but because our website is translated in all the languages, we really don't have a huge need to translate documents anymore. And then Caleb and Sean and I are working on an RFP. Wendy mentioned to you, um, last month about that, that program, Parent Square, as a possibility of a translation service, so, which is different than what we're talking about right now, but totally related. So, we're working on the RFP right now to get that out, to purchase that program for communication. Once we get that, we really feel like AI covers a lot. We will also still have an option to have a live person translate. Our parent feedback on the AI is overwhelmingly, they prefer that versus a third-party sitting at the table going between. The other cool thing about the AI stuff is you can keep record of it. So, like, for an I E P, you can download a PDF and save that all in files, so. Sorry, Gina, I've talked, and you had a question.
Oh, you're, no, 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 you were going, I just wanted to know how, how we, how are we letting parents who need translate translation services know? I need translation.
So, by law, we have to, when they, when any parent registers, they're asked four questions. It's called the Home Language Survey. One of those questions says which language you prefer communication comes home to you. So, we have that system all set up, and we collect that data. And then we will, we send letters home to all those parents in their language saying, this is how you request language translation. So, those are all going out actually, and we're getting, we need a new phone number set up for parents to contact, a separate line. So, as soon as that number's, um, updated, our letters will start going out in the next, probably two or three weeks.
And what they have information about, they can go on the website.
It'll tell them, it tells them, yeah, in fact, I think, I don't know if that PDF that Bonnie put is linkable, but you can, that the document of all of our procedures, there's a link there to the letter. I don't know if it opens in board docs for you to see, or you probably have to request access, and I probably didn't give it to you, so I can do that. Um, so, yes, the letter says, here's how you request translation services or interpretation services. It basically leaves them to the website or an email or a phone number.
Yep, great work. Thank you.
This is really incredible. I, I guess that, that was the question I had mine, on my mind, is like, is Parent Square still relevant? Like, do we still need that after all this? But it sounds like they'll work together.
Different, yeah, they work together. It's a little different. Parent Square will do things like a principal wants to send an email out saying, hey, there's stem fair at our school tonight. Don't forget about that, and it will blast that out if the parent set it up on their end. So, we'll have lots of training to do on how to set apps up on their phone to receive the language that they want. And whether that's Parent Square, there's several different companies that do it. But there, there will be a significant need to train parents and to train the community on how to do that, but we can do that. Different, yes.
It, it might also be beneficial maybe to have principals know about, maybe they already know, but to have them know, because I know, and even teachers, right, so they can help parents.
So, we have a teacher site up as well. So, there's a, the, a teacher website is being worked on right now. They can actually access this too. Teachers are pretty familiar with Language Line and knowing how to get supports. Like I said, we've been using the Timekettle in the schools since September. So, a little more familiar, but you're right, part of our whole process is training program for teachers on how to.
To even front desk people, they have people come in, because they may not read.
Yep.
I read every email I get, I promise, but some people don't read every email, right? And so, I think maybe that would be helpful.
Yeah, in our procedures, there is a portion of the law that we have to do training annually, so that is part of our, what we're working on. Yep.
Thank you.
Just my question, I was thinking about how we put our policies up for community input. I'm like, this is so technical. I don't know that that's effective at all, but I was wondering what I, because we had on it, if we would know how to give feedback and make sure we do have everything. You mentioned you had the whole committee.
Yeah, so this has been in front of our MTSS group, Administrator MTSS group, as well as some EL supervisors. I've had a few parents look at it. Um, it, it really is directly aligned to the hospital, we're able to, like, the language.
Was there a sample?
Pretty much the same, yeah.
State plan?
Example policy, and we followed that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My question more towards Wendy is, is there any other policy we're supposed to be creating that the state is requiring?
I'm su, I'm sure there are, no.
Um, the language policy has been on our radar for, since I got here, but I don't, I, I don't know what took place prior to that. So, this is just, this is just something that I've been passionate about, and the reason it came is because I heard a situation of where an individual was called in to interpret the, I'm like, why would that person be interpreting? Like, do we not have interpreters? Like, how is this happening? And so, then just in asking questions and then talking with Michelle, this is the, this is where we landed, so. Anyway, so, no, it's just, this was uncovered more as a result of some other situations that occurred. So, when the legislative session ends, they'll give me a list of all of the different policies and different legislation that comes out, and then we'll assign those out to policy committee from there, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle, and Wendy. And so, we'll vote.
And so we'll vote then on our inclusive learning environments policy tonight, and then this is the first reading of the language access policy. So that should go up on the website, right? And we can review that and the procedure and send any feedback you have, if you have any there, so. Okay. All right, let's move on to item number nine. The, well, actually, is there dinner here? Should we take a quick, or is it? Okay. Shall we take a quick five minutes?
Sure.
Okay. Dinner is here, so why don't we take a quick five-minute recess? We'll grab our dinner, take a quick break, and then we'll come back for item number nine, since we're very, very ahead of schedule.
Okay.
Okay. Let me go.
All your back-to-back shifts. I don't have a, oh, I was so tired. I was, yeah, I just worked hard on Sunday.
Whoa.
Sorry. Um, yeah, I was, I, um, it was long. I was, sometimes I'm up for it when I do them and sometimes I'm not and it was just, I was just. And I did a film on Sunday. I just had like a crazy stomach and I didn't relate, you have to call by four to call at six technically. So it was like five, I woke up. I don't feel great, but I could get, anyway, so it was, it was a long day. But we all do that. We all have those days.
We do, but we don't all work those shifts.
Yeah, I mean, so it's like twenty-four hours of work.
Twenty-three, yeah, my friends would finish two nights.
I hadn't seen it the first time.
And then today after her second night was the first year of classes, like a four-hour, six-hour meeting, like ninety-one or whatever. She went straight into that from her second night. And she was so tired. I talked to her, she was driving home.
She'd be just like, like, on Sunday, I'm actually gonna come, but it's so bad. But, um, to my, it was nice to meet Lori.
Oh, good, you met her?
Yeah, she came and got.
Hi, Aurora.
Hi. Happy, good to see you too. This is a focus end of the table.
Yes, obviously.
My stuff, so we'll have some space.
We really need a bigger table sometimes.
Oh, you made it. Yeah.
Excellent.
You're gonna be a team, so you can sign.
Is he a registered Republican?
Ooh, I'm not a registered Republican.
Okay, sorry that.
Uh, my party affiliation is different.
That's the hard part about it.
I know.
I would sign. I'll still vote for him. He should get on the ballot. He got on about four years ago. No, I remember there was a challenger because, although she did seem kind of, I don't know, she did not seem like she had a strong campaign. Does not seem like she had money in her campaign.
I really appreciate it.
He does.
I'm good. Yeah, thank you, Beth. Wendy, you didn't make any changes on the deck, did you?
Okay.
No, I sent it on Friday. Okay, sorry.
Well, it's on the, there's a presentation attached to Word docs.
Okay. Do you have, do you have me resend it anywhere though? Okay, okay. I usually don't eat, but I'm starving somehow. Forget it.
My daughter was like, "Make sure you eat your dinner in camera even though no one else does." "We do." She's like, "You always, like you always."
Okay, welcome back, everybody. Um, we're gonna go ahead and jump back up to item number six, our strategic planning session. We're grateful to have Aurora Laura with us tonight. So go ahead and leave that. Thank you, Aurora.
Okay, great. I'll stand up so I can see the screen and then I'll sit down when I'm taking notes for the discussion. But everyone, thanks for having me here again today. We're at our third work session and so, you wanna go ahead to the next slide? Oh, well, we'll start, Wendy, do you want to say any kind of welcome or?
We're good. We're good.
Okay.
Welcome, everyone. Here you go.
All right, let's move on. So today what we're hoping to do is to finalize the core values, vision, and mission, or at least get as close as possible to those. And I'm also gonna share the stakeholder survey data with you all. So let's go ahead and to the next slide. Um, just a quick review, core values of the set of beliefs that drive all behaviors of the district. The vision describes what the district hopes to achieve or be in the future. And the mission articulates what is unique about who the district is, what the district does, and who the district serves. Okay, next slide. So core values, we, of course, so these are the, core values direct the behavior and decision-making of an organization's employees. Let's go to the next slide. So where we ended last time, we're with these five, belonging, empowerment, growth, greatness, and creativity. We got feedback from the steering committee on these and from the district's cap extended leadership team group. And the feedback that we got, do another click, is people overall like them, but there's still a lot of debate around the word greatness, with people either loving it or hating it. And so what some people suggested in the end is that maybe we take it out and include some of those elements in the definition for growth and just have four core values. Um, next slide. Okay. So I guess first, let's go, let's go ahead and discuss, go ahead and go back to it. All right, let, do you, let's discuss like what you feel about greatness. Do you wanna keep it in? Do you wanna take it out? Replace it with something else? I think, let's just open it up for discussion. I'm not tied to greatness. I'm not great among I am, in my own way. Um, but if we eliminate it, I guess it's a question for all of us, if we eliminate greatness, do the other four then encompass everything that we want or do we need to replace it with something else? Because what was greatness, remind me, what was greatness trying to encompass?
Excellence.
Excellence.
Excellence, but not perfection. The sample definitions try to incorporate greatness a lot.
I noticed that.
Yeah, and I tried, like I sent out some last night and I should have sent it to you guys too, I'm sorry. But I tried to incorporate kind of that feeling of greatness into the definitions that I had worked on, just to try to make sure.
So Lisa, you're saying it can go, you feel like it can go in with other stuff?
I think, I mean, I'm looking at what I have here. I had a different set, like I have belonging, growth, creativity, and community engagement. Um, because I thought greatness and empowerment and excellence could all be the word in the definition for those values.
Oh, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
So I tried in the definitions to really emphasize belonging and greatness or academic, all of those pieces in the definition, thinking, you know, I think it's important that we have a short set of values, words.
I agree.
And so whether those are the exact word or not, we can get the point across, right, in, into place.
So Lisa, what were your suggestions?
Um, I wrote belonging, I mentioned, creating a welcoming and supportive environment where diversity is celebrated and all students feel valued, respected, and included. Growth, striving for academic rigor, innovative teaching methods, and continuous improvement. To foster student success and achievement. Creativity, encouraging innovation, imagination, and critical thinking to inspire lifelong learning and problem-solving skills. And then community engagement, establishing strong partnerships between schools, families, and the broader community to enhance educational experiences and address the needs of students affected by education. So, but it's, it's similar to what we have here. I just switched out empowerment and put in community engagement, because I thought we could use, we could be empowering all the way through.
This is a stylistic point. I think if we were to go with that community engagement, we just say community. And we can have the same definition, but just so all flows together.
Yeah, community can involve a lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
So you're sorry, Lisa, belonging, growth, creativity, and community.
Yeah. So empowerment would be gone.
Gone.
But I'm not saying you have to. I, I was just trying to kind of, no.
I do like those four.
I don't mind an emphasis on the community, but I also feel there's importance in having something like the empowerment as its own value. Like we're empowering learners.
Yeah.
For success today, for success in our future, that they're taking ownership of their own learning. I feel that's important.
And the definition of empowerment, I feel like it's, didn't we get feedback a little bit on it?
Yeah.
The actual definition, if you think I'm asking.
Yeah.
Because it was sort of taking a couple of different tones that would, sort of like the way you just described it, Joffer. You'll see those three different definitions for empowerment. People were thinking about that word in different ways.
Yeah. And on the next set of slides, we do have some draft definitions that were drafted by the steering committee. And so you can kind of see the directions that they were thinking. We don't have to finalize the definitions today, but I'm hoping we can get closer and get almost all the way there on those. But just let me know when we're, when you're ready for us to take a look at those. I don't know, we haven't completely come to agreement here, but.
How does everyone feel about greatness? I mean, I'm not super tied to it either. Is everyone okay with ditching greatness?
I'm okay with greatness now. Okay.
It's not permanently, but just an arc.
Yeah, yes.
Just as a, just as a core value.
I guess it could be included in the definition of growth.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what the steering committee suggested. I do like, I do like community, I think, over empowerment. I don't know why.
I do like community too. I just think that belonging can, and community, no, they'll be defined, of course, but they almost feel similar.
Similar.
Yeah.
You can involve the community aspect in the definition of belonging.
Right.
Right, and I was thinking, because I don't think we want a long definition that tries to incorporate every single thing that could be referred to, which, which started to happen a little bit in our conversations. That's why I was trying to separate those out a little because I thought we can talk one about a welcoming environment, right? And then, and then community can be about sort of our partnerships and collaboration.
Well, if you look at the second suggested definition on belonging.
Yep.
We're committed to building a welcoming environment.
Yeah. Why don't we go to the first definition page? Yeah, here we go.
All stakeholders give them a voice and allows us to learn from one another. And to me, that involves the community. In fact, I almost was like, why are we saying stakeholders when we wanna focus on students, right? Which I get, we want everybody in there, but, so to me, stakeholders makes me think of the community.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yes, so here, yeah, here are two draft definitions that were drafted by the steering committee. Um, so I'd just love to get your thoughts on these. Are you leaning more towards one? Are there words that we could switch out? Or do we have other suggestions that, that, that would work? I did not get all of what you said typed, so we'll have to go back through it.
I can share with you if you're interested.
Yeah.
I personally like two better. Do we wanna think of a different word than stakeholders? Like Jennifer suggested?
I, I believe in the students and stakeholders, or, I don't know. Don't wanna lose our focus on students.
I like, I like Lisa's definition.
Um, it says, "Creating a welcoming and supportive environment where diversity is celebrated and all students feel valued, respected, and included."
I'm just, diversity, and then we say differences, just 'cause diversity has become a bit more.
That's a word for me.
Yeah.
I like diversity. Differences are celebrated? I don't know, we gotta, that's just me and Lisa, so before we do any, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just.
That, to me, is just more accessible. When I read that, I have to really kind of look at it and think about it, but this, I read it and I get it.
So you're saying you like this one?
I like Lisa's, because it, to me, it's easier, I don't have to like, this, I'm like embracing it, come on, that's really, uh, I have to think more about it. And this is just, you read it and you know exactly what it's saying.
One thing we did talk about, in my group at least, was the, we are committed, that, like, it sounds kind of fluffy. So like, we build welcoming, encouraging environments rather than we're committed to building.
More action-oriented.
Yeah.
I will share for those of you who are at the steering committee, one group did not turn in their paper. So there was something missing.
Was it our group?
I don't know, I don't know, when I, when I went.
Someone came around and collected it from our table, so I hope it was in there.
Yeah, they were collecting.
Yeah, well, I ended up with, oh, but one, one group ended up handing in the wrong, handed back their data packet, but I think they grabbed the wrong thing and turned it in. To me, so there's one that was missing from the pile. So if anyone knows, we wrote a really great definition on there. It might have been the missing pack. Okay. Um, any other thoughts? Lisa, can you read this one more time? I missed a phrase in the middle.
Sure, and, and I'm not, I, I'm fine with either one. I just like this value of belonging, I think it's important.
Mm-hmm.
It's for creating a welcoming and supportive environment where diversity is celebrated and all students feel valued, respected, and included.
I, that's just, it tells you exactly what it is. I'm gonna have to use diversity with these.
Yeah, where differences are celebrated and all students feel valued, respected, included.
There's no fluff there. I'm not a fluff person.
Does that help you feel like a person is part of this bigger thing but still can be themselves?
Yeah.
That's kind of what I've wanted to go for personally with belonging, that you're part of a bigger thing, completely as yourself, right?
All right, should we? Head in that direction, Ben? All right, great. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, uh, one, sorry, one other thought.
Okay.
After I just said how much I feel it's important to have the word students in there, now that I'm reading that again, we want our teachers, we want everyone in our buildings to feel valued, respected, and included, so.
We can just say we're all.
Yeah, we can take out.
Students and, and stakeholders are students, all.
We could just say we're all.
Everyone.
We're everyone.
Instead of all students, we could just say we're everyone, really, we're valued, respected, and included.
Everyone feels valued.
And I, I do question the word celebrated. I, I wonder how some, some stakeholders might define that differently or it might concern them um, than what I think our intention is.
Sure.
So I'm wondering if we say where differences are, well, I thought of valued, but we don't have valued in there, but. So I'm wondering if we say where differences are, well, I thought of valued, but we don't have valued in there, but.
Well, we could say where differences are valued and everyone feels respected and included. Do you know what I mean? Instead of.
I don't know, why don't you guys bring over the issues?
I think I'm, I think I like that better, Jennifer, where differences are valued and everyone feels.
Respected and included.
Respected and included.
Okay. Do we have it?
Is everyone gonna be mad at us 'cause it's completely different?
No. Honestly, people might not even remember where we landed.
True, this is probably true.
Okay, great. All right, let's move on to the next one. Creativity, we had several draft definitions that came out. We support and learn from creative attempts to meet or exceed our goals in new ways. Effective problem solving encourages a culture of creativity and innovation. We cultivate new ideas to develop effective strategies. We cultivate new ideas and thinking to develop effective strategies and problem solving that result in positive change. We cultivate new ideas and thinking to develop effective strategies that encourage ingenuity and inspire greatness.
Ooh, there's greatness.
And Lisa, did you have one too?
I did, but I'm fine with all of it. Mine said, encouraging innovation, imagination and critical thinking to inspire lifelong learning and problem solving.
Well, I like Lisa's better.
So I suggested the word imagination at our steering committee.
I like it.
And then I got told that that's a preschool word.
That was a higher like it.
And I was like, maybe that's why they like it, Lisa, that's why they're involved in preschool, but I don't know, it's some, that it might just be like scoffed at because it sounds too
Yeah.
Your two preschools are true.
juvenile, I don't know, it, and I.
Imagination is a good word.
We shouldn't use that image.
I like that word, but. True, anyways, I I mean, I just wanted to point that out in case anyone else wants to think about that and decide if they feel like that's a good word or not.
But it's an, innovation and critical thinking, so it's kind of challenged with some raw terms.
Right. Inspire. I. I like that it uses innovation, 'cause I think that's important, we need to be innovative, if we want to continue to have public schools, we need to be more innovative.
I heard a lot at our steering committee about this word creativity applying to our students as well as our, all of our employees in in every part
Mm-hmm.
of your area where you're contributing in this to school district, like creativity should be valued and and celebrated, I feel like.
Yes.
So I I think that's, we wanna try to kind of keep our definitions up so that it would feel applicable to all. Um, one thing I like about your suggestions, Lisa, is they all start with a verb. Instead of we do this or we do that, I like how it's creating or striving, yeah.
Yep.
It's just more, like, it really is, just, it tells you what it is and we don't have to figure out what we're talking about.
That was from the steering committee, I'm not taking any questions, I heard someone in the steering committee give that input, like, take out the subject of that and
Great. Yeah, yeah.
punch it in with your action, and I thought that was, that's good.
Great. All right, so do we feel good about?
I actually prefer hers.
Uh-huh, great, yeah.
I'm wondering if it's from the steering committee.
Well, but, yeah.
The steering committee of B M Lisa.
Well, no, I I can note.
Okay, are we ready to move on, or any more discussion on? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the next one. Empowerment, uh, we provide the tools, resources and environment to remove barriers, build confidence and develop abilities to reach our highest potential. We believe students, families and staff should gain confidence, feel capable and believe in their own impact and that what they do matters. And students, families and staff have the ability to bring about positive change in their community and schools. And now for Lisa's.
No, no, I don't have one.
She doesn't have.
Oh, oh, that's right, 'cause you changed it out for her.
But we could say providing, like, I like the first one and I would say providing the tools, you know what I mean?
Providing, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
I had the name thought.
I, one word that I just was thinking about when we were thinking about providing, I don't know if there's any way we can put in there opportunity and access. Or, I don't know how we could go in there. That is the tools and resources.
So is it the first one that we like most? I really like the last one, just 'cause it's more accessible, but I like what it's saying.
Well, opportunity and access is similar to remove barriers, so. So how do we want to say it? I don't know, I think we need to go.
I guess it's just the suggestion.
Yeah, so I guess which one has more effective way to say it or.
I feel like opportunity.
Well, tools and resources might be, I guess they're not really redundant, but if you wanted to, um, we provide opportunities and access.
How would you?
I don't know, that's why I'm just not even.
Right, the resources and opportunity.
Yeah, you could just say providing resources and opportunities to to build confidence, I don't even, there's so many words there.
Tools. Mm-hmm.
I.
I think we should keep it.
If we go to the third one, you you put in front of that, providing students, families and staff the ability to bring about po, I, if you changed it so it's now at the verb, it could be again, providing students.
But can you provide an ability? And or do you?
The opportunity, yeah, providing students, families and staff the opportunities to bring about po- positive change in their community and schools, I don't know.
In steering committee, we talked about how that third definition is kind of narrow in what we want empowerment to be. 'Cause the first one is, it's more than just bringing about positive change but reaching our highest potential. 'Cause actually that first definition was the one my group came up with.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It was ours.
Yeah.
We did that well.
Yeah, I think there were, you know, there were a couple ideas around this word empowerment and some people weren't comfortable with the word empowerment. But the idea, one is, yes, empowering you as an individual, right, to to feel like you, as a child, that you're powerful, that you're the, that you're, you can impact your learning. But then the other idea I heard people talking about was sort of this empowerment piece around um feeling empowered to contribute to your community or to you, or, I I don't know, so I I think there are a couple of things and I I guess my question is which do you feel is the value or are they the same? You know, what do you always think is the right value, core value that we have here, what is, what do we represent?
To contribute to community versus what?
Versus like empowering yourself, right, like a crowd feels personally empowered to.
Like your personal. I think no one's gonna contribute to their community unless they feel personally empowered, right, I think contributing to community is a result of feeling empowered.
Yeah.
I think you could apply. Yeah, and I think you could apply that.
To reaching your highest potential.
Like if I'm looking, I like the first definition best too, and I think you can apply that to being empowered to take that beyond the classroom. Um, and I get what you're saying, Gina, about how the last one's succinct. But I I don't think it describes enough of what we're trying to do.
We just.
We just, we just need to make the top one more succinct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and if we're gonna use empowerment as a core value, it needs to be something where, when I go to work, I think this is a core value of my district.
Providing the tools.
And I need, like, how does it guide me as, like, I guess that's why kind of actually I took it off the list. I just wasn't, I feel like we are trying to empower in all the things we do, but I'm not sure how it stands.
Along, it's almost like the result of what we're doing.
I, that's what I was trying to figure out, like, does it need to be a separate one or could we put it under our other ones and how we talk about what we do? But um, but I do like, I like that first one, I think if we just change it a couple of ways.
I I do think the value of empowerment can have an effect on how a teacher would approach.
Yeah.
How how learning happens in the classroom, right? Am I just going to talk to them and hope they get it, or am I gonna empower them to be learners and actively engaged and have a.
Yeah.
So I am fine either way, I do prefer taking out empowerment, putting in community. Few reasons that Lisa listed, but I'm fine.
As a value.
As a value.
Okay, what were the words you wanted? I just took what it has to. What were the words you liked?
Opportunity.
Opportunity and access.
But we don't have to use it.
I think opportunities is good, I don't know about access.
Well, if you, and you could say access instead of remove barriers, which are kind of two ways to say the same thing.
Yeah.
I I, yeah.
I feel like removing barriers better, although it's, it is negative rather than positive.
Right, take it away. So then we have this list of three things, right, you're doing these things in order to, and you have barriers, students have removed barriers, build confidence and develop abilities to reach highest potential. So if you could to change that out, the need to, you need to switch that.
Yeah. It's not good.
No, I agree with you about, okay, it says to remove barriers, to reach our highest potential, it feels almost a little redundant or like too um, like run on sentence almost, so if you were able to ins- change something out
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
in the place of to remove barriers, so you don't have the word to there, then it doesn't feel so long and drawn out to me.
So if you do change it to opportunity or active.
So you could say providing the tools, resources and opportunities to build confidence and develop abilities to reach our highest potential.
Yeah, the two twos sound goofy to me and I don't know what the right way is to.
Yeah.
To develop abilities.
Build confidence.
Can we get four things?
You could give it an and.
And reach our highest.
What if you said and opportunities to build confidence, develop abilities and.
Yeah. And reach our highest.
And reach our highest potential.
There you go, maybe that needs to be an and, and then it would also run on like to be.
Build confidence.
Yeah.
Providing tools, resources.
Yeah.
Do we decide opportunity instead of envi, I like opportunities better than environment.
Tools, resources, opportunities.
To build confidence, develop abilities and reach our highest potential?
Yeah.
Abilities and opportunities, could we say develop capacity? I just feel like there's.
Because we, in our life, opportunities and abilities in our, uh, uh.
Can you read what you just said?
So, providing the tools, resources and opportunities to build confidence, develop capacity and reach our highest potential.
Do we need the tools? Do we just wanna say providing tools, resources and opportunities to build confidence, develop capacity and reach our highest potential?
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay.
Did you catch that?
Yeah, so providing tools, resources and opportunities to build confidence, develop capacity and reach our highest potential?
There you go, that sounds, I like that.
Yay. All right, are we good? Let's move on. Wonderful.
Sorry, I'm sorry, we can't move on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go, no, no, no.
This is the only one that we have our, right? The rest of them are kind of separate, but it's like, and then here we have reach our highest potential, maybe that's okay, but it seems to me that it doesn't match.
Yeah.
Is it reading their highest potential? I don't know.
I don't, their highest?
What if we say providing students with tools?
And stakeholders.
Bring greatness back into.
To reach their. Providing students with tools, resources and opportunities to build confidence, develop capacity and reach their highest potential.
That fits better than our.
Yeah, 'cause the word.
Not that, it is ours, but it just didn't fit with the others that were.
And it puts students back right up front.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and I do think we do need to have something where we do focus on students, this may be a good way to, this doesn't mean it doesn't apply, I don't think, to employees, but.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I changed it. Refresh.
Refresh.
Sign down.
I guess the only question is, we wanna be clear about empowering even like our employees.
That's a good question.
We didn't face students, um.
Well, Lisa has students that I know on her, on her.
Yeah, that's, just, I, I'm not, I like focusing on students, I just think about.
I think we do need one.
District as a whole, right.
We say providing tools, but we wanna empower our teachers too, right, providing tools for our teachers.
Yeah, yeah, so they need to reach their potential.
Well, we. I agree, but I think there needs to be, this word student needs to be in our values somewhere.
Growth.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Their student is mine under community and under population.
The one that Lisa has for growth.
Okay.
She has the word student in there, which makes sense to me because that's all about academic rigor and.
This is also, there's gonna be a vision and a mission.
Right, there's lots of that.
And the values, so I think having students front and center and.
I just worry we're gonna lose, I don't wanna lose the employees, but I worry we're gonna lose the student focus.
Sure, I was, it was just a consider.
No, 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 I, but I agree, because I do think we want our employees to feel, I, I'm fine, whatever.
But I.
Let's be real, no one's gonna read it.
Gina.
Except us.
We're gonna read it every day.
Okay.
It's gonna be like a fledge of allegiance.
I know, it will be a mantra.
No, but now that you say that, I think we should reapply it.
Well, at the bottom I did put a motto, did you see my motto?
This will, your point's right by for point thirty.
Learn, think, create, serve.
But you bring up a good point.
I was like, don't have a motto.
Do we need to say providing students and staff with tools and res- resources and opportunities to build confidence, develop capacity and reach their highest potential?
Yeah, I think.
Or just take out students and staff, just because we know it applies to everyone, providing tools, resources and opportunities to build.
But then we're stuck with the word there.
It was the pronoun there, it needed, it needed, so we're trying to not like.
Oh, right.
But we have the hours.
To reach the highest potential, to reach.
To achieve greatness. To achieve greatness, there we go, I like it.
Honestly, if you put it there, that's the same as highest potential, right?
Okay, do it.
Yeah.
Okay, get rid of students and staff and just say to achieve.
Providing tools, resources and opportunities to build confidence, develop capacity and achieve greatness?
Yeah. I mean, that's what empowerment does, it powers you to achieve. Greatness.
More excellence, if we wanna try that.
I guess empowerment is always have to be just linked to achievement, right, empowerment could be using your voice, speaking up, it can be.
Right.
But maybe in this context, we're specific to achieving.
And those are great, I mean, but greatness isn't. It's not just academic.
Just academic.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so we're at providing tools, resources and opportunities to build confidence, develop capacity and achieve greatness. Yep.
Then we got greatness in there.
Okay.
Wendy will be so pleased.
All right, any last comments on that before we move on? Okay, let's go to the next one. Okay, growth, we develop our individual abilities through hard work and dedication to continuous improvement. We will achieve great outcomes by holding high expectations for ourselves and each other. We believe our full capacity and potential can be reached through hard work and dedication to continuous improvement. Or we believe in developing our abilities through hard work and dedication to continuous improvement. We have high expectations for ourselves to achieve great outcomes. And Lisa, did you have one for this?
It says, striving for academic rigor, innovative teaching methods and continuous improvement to foster student success and achievement.
Amen.
I like that too, actually, 'cause it feels a little bit more focused on academic, but rather than like reaching potential, which is more what empowerment was all about.
Yeah.
And this, these ones up here talk a lot about reaching potential, it feels like. So I almost like Lisa's as well. Focus more on academic.
Yeah, sorry, after spending a whole day at Franklin doing the CSI stuff, like I I'm, I'm, I really liked having growth on there and I like Lisa's definition better because it really should be academic. The new health consultants were focusing more on the academic goals.
Well, and something that I think I've heard that we value is, it's not just achievement, it's this continuous improvement, right? Like, it's this idea that everyone has the ability to make growth, to to improve and and we can be creative in the ways we support that continuous improvement. Have to look like one specific destination, it's more like this whole mindset around the process, right, of getting back up and continuing to.
I like having in your definition rigor.
Okay, so are we good with Lisa's?
Yep.
Awesome, okay. All right, let's let's move on, oh, so I guess the only other question then, um, did we wanna add in community or keep it with the four that we have?
I like four, but I also like community.
I like community.
Okay.
But, who else?
I think too many, Wendy, what do you think? I think four is good. I think five is fine, but I do like the idea of community. I think it resonates with what we're trying to, what we're really trying to build. Like, this isn't just about students, it's everybody involved as part of this process. I do think it's important.
I think sometimes our communities felt left out.
I know.
I think it's good to have it. Um, I agree Gina, I think general four is better than five, but not if we're leaving out something important. So I would say let's add community and then take it back to the steering committee and see what they say.
See what they say.
The thing about that CAPS program, right, and just how much learning has taken place from bringing our community into that process? I just think that has really enriched what we can.
Okay, so I will take that to the steering committee, um, get their thoughts on number five as community. Any, any other feedback about core values?
I'm just thinking if we wanna pare it down to four, there's a lot of, a lot that can be overlapped between growth, creativity, and empowerment, I feel like. Like, right, there's
Mm-hmm.
Potential for some kind of combination. I don't know what that is, but.
Well, I think going back to what Lisa said, I think empowerment is a piece of all those things, right?
You, you feel empowered, you can, you know, grow something, right? If you feel empowered, be creative, feel empowered to even belong. I don't know, so we just, I don't know, that's a doing a work we can stay, but.
I do like four when empowerment and keep the ones.
But I think.
When you described it, I mean, Megan made me think that we need to keep empowerment as one, and maybe creativity roles in everything, but the.
Yeah, sure, that's fair.
And our teachers really loved that word empowerment. I mean, we could pull, even if we pulled community as a core value out, but put it into, like, I put it in this vision statement, or into the vision statement, or something as,
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
We see this as a partnership or collaboration with our community, then it, it's still central without it having to be listed, and then we could have four and leave empowerment in there.
Right.
You know?
What about creativity? Is that one that can feel needs to be done, valued strongly, or can that roll into some of these?
I like, it, this is the one that gets right to the heart of it. Oh, sorry, never mind creativity, I was looking at growth.
My.
Let me read creativity.
Yeah, growth. I think we should ask the steering committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna be honest, I think if you take it back to the steering committee, I think they might roll their eyes that you, I think you just need to make a decision. And then I think you're gonna take it out to focus groups or whatever. I think they're tired of seeing.
They're done.
I think they're done. I don't think they wanna see it anymore. I think they want, I think they want you to make a decision as four.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. For those of us who have been in those meetings, good to know where, where you're at in that process, like.
I don't think they ever wanna talk about core values ever again. I think if we wanna keep empower, empowerment, then I think creativity would be the one, 'cause we talk about innovative and growth.
Could we move to, like, what if we went to vision and then came back and thought, now that we have a vision statement, is there something that's maybe redundant or, or disclarified for us those values?
Sure.
Yeah, see if it's.
Yeah, I wanna see them all together.
Okay.
And see.
Yep. That sounds great. Okay, let's, so, vision, this describes what the district hopes to achieve or be in the future, so it's the aspirational piece, it is short. Um, and let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So this is where we landed last time, and this is what we got feedback on, um, with the steering committee. Achieving greatness, creating community, fostering growth, or empowering students, building community, continuous growth. Next slide. So here is their feedback. They like the alignment, but kind of dislike that repetition, and they feel like it's just repeating the same ideas as the core values, and, and they didn't wanna, they don't wanna just feel like we keep repeating the same things over and over. Um, they did like having three layers that address, that address the different levels and having the ing words. Um, there was some feedback about playing with the order or changing out some of the words. Um, we might wanna consider using some of the core values that didn't make the cut into, into the vision, so we're not saying the same thing. And the cabinet had some different ideas that we'll see, um, at the bottom of the next slide. All right, so let's go. So these were a combination of ones that we got from the steering committee and ones that we got from cabinet. Building resilient, capable students and community, empowering students, fostering growth, building community. Building community by empowering students and fostering growth, maximizing student learning in a supportive environment for all. It begins and ends with students. PCSD seeks to be a destination district committed to excellence in a safe and welcoming environment.
Nice drop number five.
Where'd that come from again?
Yours.
Yours, yeah.
Yeah, machine reads.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if we have to pay him copyright. No, but I'd be happy to do that. I can use his phrase.
Lisa, do you wanna read yours, just throw it in the?
Well, it's so long. I like the short part.
But, right, but I think it'll just give us something to compare it to. We can say it's too long, but.
Sure. 'Cause I tried to, I, I had a longer statement and then it just goes fourth, it just says, the Provo City School District provides a vibrant learning community where all adults and children develop and apply curiosity, skills, and habits of lifelong learners. Our success is built on the partnership of educators, families, and community members that is committed to providing the means for Provo's children to create happy and successful lives. That's long.
That's where it must come on.
More of it, yeah, probably. I don't, in my brain, those things are all.
I know, they're all kind of.
I know you've taught us, and I'm sorry, I knew you made it really clear, did that work, and then I just kept.
That's okay. When I, when I'm reading them, they're very clear, but when they're, when they're, it's like, I can't remember. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, and then I just, after that I put those four themes, 'cause I just really love them, but all students in the Provo City School District will learn. And that must define this develop the confidence and resilience that result from exceptional effort. Think, authentically engage in a rigorous curriculum. Create, apply their learning to address important challenges and serve, make a positive difference in the life of others.
It is a bit long, but I do like.
That's super long. So, anyway, go back to those ones.
Well, I like the, if we're gonna do just a one sentence one, your first sentence, I think, is a good vision statement. The Provo City School District provides a vibrant learning community where all adults and children develop and apply the curiosity, skills, and habits of lifelong learners.
Yeah.
And the next part's about community. If we keep community up top, then we don't need to do it here.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
That's why I was thinking if we have the vibrant learning community.
Okay. Other thoughts?
I do like number five. I'm always, I'm always in favor of short and sweet.
It begins and ends with students. I like it.
Yeah. Yeah. It's the definition of it goes to achieve will be in the future. I don't think it answers the vision question.
It feels more like a motto than a.
I, yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I, I do think it's a motto. Um, I mean, you guys can do whatever you want with it. I, I'm not sure that it begins and ends, it seems, is an actual vision statement.
And it doesn't have a.
Can it be used somewhere else?
It could be your motto.
That could be a motto.
I think we should have a video of Rebecca. Every time you go on the website, go like.
Me, why you?
Probably be a Wendy.
Wendy, Wendy gets to be the face.
I do think we should use that or something like that, but I don't, in my opinion, it's not a vision statement.
And I like, I mean, I like all of these, like, I like building resilient, capable students. I mean, I think that idea of resilience is really important, you know, so I, I like that one.
I.
If we took empowerment out as a value, we could use one of these that says empowering. Do you know what I'm saying? And then we, anyway.
I like number two on the others suggested. It's just simple.
Yeah, yeah.
Honestly, the de, de, the definition we settled on, on empowerment, and your vision statement, Lisa, are very similar.
Um.
Oh, yeah. So take, so go to this vision statement, then that number, was it two? I just switched back and worked. Um, empowering students, fostering growth, building community, like, that's.
Some things here and there.
Easy. Isn't that fair?
It does repeat a lot of the values, though.
It does repeat our values.
That is true.
Based on our values.
But then some of them are repeated.
Yeah, but is our vision supposed to be where we're going, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So those things are happening, where are they taking us?
Yeah.
Isn't that, so, seems like the one you wrote, to create lifelong learners, that's where, that's where we're going, right?
I, I, that's my favorite phrase, and there's the lifelong learners, that's really what we want.
Yeah, so I just think, we want it short, but a vision doesn't sound like, it, it's so concise that then you aren't getting someone.
We are gonna talk later about how we do it, right? So this is just, yeah, so I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's submission.
If we did just that first sentence, the Provo City School District provides a vibrant learning community where all, and we don't have to say all adults and children, but because I hadn't worked all of that in under values, I was trying to put that we care about in place, that, that all adults and children develop and apply the curiosity, skills, and habits of lifelong.
Could you just do we're all students?
Yeah.
And could we do the same thing where we did before? Why would we have to say the Provo City School District? Let's just say providing.
Providing. Yeah.
We, they know who we are, it's our statement, right?
Yeah, I don't know how vision statement.
Yeah, just get to.
What's the typical?
Destroyed or.
Yeah, what?
Do you say the name of the district in the vision, in the vision statement?
Just providing.
Um, I think it's mixed, but I don't think they all do that. I think most of them actually don't.
Providing.
Don't say it?
Providing a vibrant learning community.
Don't necessarily have the name of the district in the vision statement.
Where all students develop and apply the curiosity, skills, and habits of lifelong. And that, if we use the word students, that helps us focus with in the means of student training. We're helping students develop them and apply them to be lifelong.
Somebody edit that. So I have one thing too with providing, because providing sounds like we're, we're doing something now, and this is a vision statement of what we want in the future, right?
Yes.
So we don't wanna be, in, in the future, do we still wanna be providing for people who never graduated? Like, that's like, when we, right? I don't wanna be.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we're trying to state, like, how, I don't, we're not only talking about it, like, this will happen down the road, we're trying to say this is what we're going to be.
Could we just say we are a vibrant learning community?
So that's why I was trying to use present.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are a vibrant learning community.
Provide. Yeah.
And I, I just looked up some other, I had a list of some other examples. Actually, they do, oh, almost all start with the name of the district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I actually think that makes sense, because, well, it, it, it provides ownership, right? It provides ownership of what we're saying.
Yeah.
The statement.
It's who we are. Yeah. Is a vibrant learning. How about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. That's a vision statement.
Yes, like.
Plus, I like that it's not following paralleling value.
Yes. I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna change adults and children to students.
Yeah.
All.
I do really wanna put in the, it begins and ends with students somewhere in the strategic plan, 'cause I think it is a good quote.
It sounds like the primary children's child person always, you know.
You need something short and.
Which is also excellent.
For all the people who aren't gonna read all of these.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Basis of our plan, it begins and ends with students.
I'm not gonna put this vision statement on a T-shirt, but I might put that motto on it.
People wore the T-shirt more than.
Well, that's what I was saying, like, everybody, all in here, Provo school, right, like, begins and ends with students.
Right, yeah, I like that, yeah. Okay, so are we good with Lisa's modified version?
Yeah.
Provo City School District.
Me and Lisa's.
Did you like the word destination district?
Yeah.
I like that.
A vibrant learning community could be Provost District is a destination, but then we say district twice in there, so I don't know.
I like the concept. I don't know that I like it as, in a formal document like this, but
As a vision statement.
It starts me thinking vacation too, this is how.
Board retreats.
That can be part of goals.
Or, all of our retreats, we do, yes, we do do board retreats, so.
I, I like the sentiment of it. I don't know if it's the right thing, so.
I like vibrant learning community better, but, um, the destination districts resonated with me when I, when I read it.
Yeah.
I don't know, and I think I agree with Jenna for that. I don't know that it needs to be in the vision statement, but it needs to be implied.
I wonder if we could put. I think we could put destination district under the priorities section, 'cause I think we are gonna have a priority on HR and teachers, so.
Okay, so are we ready to move on to mission? All right, great, let's move on to the next.
You can keep going.
All right, submission articulates what's unique about who the district is, what the district does, and who it serves. This is what we are doing in order to achieve our vision. Okay, next slide. All right, so this is where we were last time. PCSD welcomes, educates, and inspires every student to become responsible, empathetic, and engaged citizens. Option two, welcome home to PCSD where everyone has an opportunity to grow and leave better prepared for life. Okay, next slide is the feedback. Um, overall, people liked the first one better, but said neither option really spoke to them. They just weren't wowed by it, but they, they did like it better. Um, there were suggestions for kind of a combination of the two options, so pieces on number one with number two. Um, but they said neither option really feels like it explains how we're going to achieve the vision, and they said the options sort of feel more like vision statements. So, next slide. Um, here's just some other ones that are, the committee wrote. PCSD welcomes, educates, and inspires the community where everyone has an opportunity to grow and leave better prepared for life. PCSD strives to welcome, educate, and inspire every student to have an opportunity to grow and be better prepa- prepared for life. We develop responsible, empathetic, and engaged citizens through innovative learning experiences. And we provide exceptional learning experiences in a safe and supportive environment to prepare every student to achieve their dreams. And did you have one too?
Well, I'm not gonna lie, it felt like by the time we got through all of our values and definitions and then a vision statement, we were pretty clear. And so I just, that's where that summary came in. All students in the Provo City School District will learn, develop the confi- think, create, and serve. That's where that, those four words came in.
Oh. Mm-hmm, got it, yeah.
That was like my thought of how we do that. How we do the things we talked about is that we will all, you know, develop confidence and resilience that result from exceptional effort, authentically engage in rigorous curriculum, apply learning to important challenges and serve. So I, I, no, I guess no, unless that's a mission statement, which, again, like, I got kind of mixed up around, but I was trying to, yeah, say how we do it.
I'm sorry for.
No, no.
Something that's gonna help me put all of this into perspective is to see it all together.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause like, we're doing each thing individually, and one is supposed to be the what, and another's supposed to be the how, and another's supposed to be the, the where we're going. And if I could see them all next to each other and concretely, this is the what, this is the how, this is the when, this is the where, right?
Uh-huh.
Then it's gonna make more sense to me, but trying to do them individually has for my particular brain, the way I think, like, I'm trying to put it all in perspective, and I ca- I can see how we keep getting sidetracked where it sounds more like a, a vision statement, because
Mm-hmm.
I don't have the vision statement up, like, when I'm trying to think of the mission statement. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. This just sounds like more the same. To me, that's the truth, so I guess I'm as a, sure how impactful it is to have a separate thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I feel like I wanna see them all lined up, like, what we settle on lined up, so I can compare and see if we are repeating ourselves, or if it does make sense that this is the what and this is the how, right? That's what I was.
Do you want us to try and do that now, or br- bring it back at our next one?
Um, well, we're probably, are we not prepared to do, we're not prepared to do it.
I can cut and paste this from this document.
Oh, I, I'd like, I meant we can get in, into it.
Yeah, let's do it now.
This document that we have right here.
Okay.
Is it ready yet? Yeah, we have time, right?
Um, I can cut and.
Yeah, I think we should.
We need those mission statements into it to look at it all in one sheet if you wanted to. Do you know what I'm saying? Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Is helpful? I don't know if that's helpful, that one.
Honestly, it was helpful for me to have to get your sheet.
Okay. Do you, yeah, do you, do you wanna do, 'cause you have, okay.
Do you want me to do that? Take a mission statement and I'll cut and paste it, and then I'm gonna share this right now in case.
Just leave yours.
Someone else who can, I don't know, sorry, I didn't get you on here, I'm not here, I'd say it too.
Another thing, we discussed this a few months ago, but like, how these translate into other languages, have we considered that?
Um, Laura, L-O-R-A, at insighteducationgroup.com.
I think we can. I think we can work with that. I think we can translate anything we need to, right? Like, I mean, I.
Yeah.
I think we need to work on this first. I'm not saying we shouldn't translate, I'm saying, I think we can get anything translated to how we need it to be, right?
Yeah.
So, tell me a mission statement to cut and paste from these, and we'll put it in there and look at it. Is that what you're saying? I'm like.
I like number two personally. Number two's my favorite there, but, okay.
I'm. I'm gonna cut it.
I do, I'm right.
Put it over there.
Okay. But then, I thought it's kind of more like a vision, is it?
I think with yours, Lisa, the think and learn, serve, can we also decide what we want our mission sta- if we want that to be a mission statement, can it be our mission statement? I mean, as opposed to it not being the same, the right coordinate.
Yeah, this can be, this doesn't have to be. I'm at the line of access. Just to cut that and show you. So now I've got right here on this page, that is other than a mission. Um, oh, sorry, Max, um, well, give me your emails real quickly.
MJ zero three two three five six at stu.provo.edu.
Yep, gotcha.
W, W zero five two one four. W W zero five two one four eight at stu.provo.edu.
I do think the part of these missions that probably makes them more like visions is this part about being better prepared for life, that's in the future.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so I was just thinking, what if it's just like welcome, educate, inspire, and like that's it, that's our how, we welcome these kids in, we educate them, and we inspire, that's that's a good how, right?
Um.
I like that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that would be more, I think, mission-y.
That's awesome.
Could you just leave it at that?
I mean, that could be a motto too.
Is it, is a motto part of all of this?
Is it welcome, educate, inspire, the three?
No, but you can have a motto, we we just do.
Okay.
Respect that.
Well, because we have this vision, Provo City School District, and all those words, and then mission, welcome, educate, inspire, like that.
Well, this is where we can. Or it begins and ends with students, that's how we do this, we start and end with students in everything we do. That could be a good how.
Yeah.
I think it begins and ends with students is a good T-shirt. I don't know if it's a good mission. I like welcome, educate, inspire, I like learn, think, create, and serve.
Yeah.
And I don't think welcome, educate, and inspire, but inspire and empowerment are very similar, but welcome, educate, inspire is different than belonging, growth, creativity, and community, right, and then you have some differentiation there.
I like that.
Are most mission statements like paragraphs or?
They're typically longer than the vision statement, the visions are typically one. But you know what?
We're aware of walking to the seat of our own stadium.
But you know what, I mean, it's 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 just really, so the district go different.
Carrying a yoke in there just.
Right.
They they approach it with a voice. People don't read them, Jennifer's making a good point, people don't read them, you know why they don't read them? Because they're too freaking long.
They're too long.
Right.
Yeah.
So we make them short, maybe we'll get some traction on it, maybe then people will actually remember what our mission statement is and maybe they'll actually use it, right?
And what our mission is, yeah.
Which is the point, we're trying to get people to use these things to help, that's the framework around how we do everything.
Then I'd say we go with the Shane Reese quote, if that's our goal, 'cause it is short, memorable, and we can put it on a T-shirt.
Yeah, but I like that quote, but I do like welcome, like, and it's even in the right order, like we welcome them in, we educate them, and we inspire them to go out and do many, you know.
Yeah. It's such a nice art.
Yeah.
Spread their wheat.
Yeah. So the front of the T-shirt is, the back says welcome, educate, inspire, and the sleeves say learn, think, create.
I've I've done the, I've done the portion.
Yeah, I like welcome, educate, inspire, actually, I think it's really clear.
Make a cool acronym though, 'cause that's very education, it's a way or a.
Way.
Wait, who was at my table who was like?
Whoa.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Whoa. Welcome also coordinates with the city.
Yep.
Yep.
I like it. Wendy, as instructional leader in our district, I mean, what do you think about this and how it could help with the direction, is it an advocate?
I think the simpler you make it, remembering that every single school will now take this and use it to build their own vision and mission statement, right? So, so I think you have to look at, is this, is this a, i- is this something that other schools can layer their themselves into? And and I think it is, I think when it starts to become too detailed, then it's like, well, does that, how does that apply to us and and whatnot? And so this will provide a way, I think, an entry point for all of our schools to connect to it. So I'm always gonna favor simpler, I'm not very good at making things simple, but I.
I just shared this with you if you wanna look at it all in one spot.
Thank you.
If we're going for simpler, could I make a, could we go back to the vision statement?
Yeah.
And then where we just say Provo City School District is a vibrant learning community where all students become lifelong learners? We take out, develop and apply curiosity scale, whatever, and just say become lifelong learners?
Sure.
I mean, that just kind of condenses it down, and the how, how do they become lifelong learners? We welcome them, we educate them, and we inspire them. And then that just becomes, I don't know, a little bit more easy to put together.
Oh, okay. I I guess I really love curiosity somewhere.
So do I, no, I do like it too.
I just think we just need more of that in the world, right, I just.
I do think what you're saying.
But that part has your creativity up here.
It makes it more of a vision statement, I, 'cause I think there's a little bit of a hybrid there when when you start talking about developing, you know, implying, that those are part of what we are doing, right, and you know, to help, so.
Mm, more of that sort.
Right, that kind of goes with.
Yeah, the how, right?
Yeah, so I feel like that that part maybe belongs with the mission, if we're gonna do that, but simpling it, uh simplifying to the way you said it, I think makes it more of a vision statement.
But if we simplify the mission so much, we might need the detail in it. As long as we're on the same page.
We have detail, but what where we have our detail is in our definitions of creativity.
Yeah.
Creativity, you could easily use use curiosity, if we really like the word curiosity.
Yeah, because we said innovative teaching under growth, so we could say encouraging curiosity, imagination, and critical thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or we could even just add curiosity, innovation, curiosity, imagination, and critical thinking.
I like innovation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Except for that, the definition of creativity says inspire lifelong learning, so I I think we would maybe wanna take that out of the definition of creativity because we have it in our vision, lifelong learning.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where is it lifelong learning?
In creativity.
In the definition of creativity.
Well, are we keeping all five? I guess that's where we're coming back to now. Do we want five? I think four is better.
So empowerment feels like the one.
Cuz I think, yeah, I think we should keep community, 'cause we don't really, we're not encapsulating it the same way in the other two.
Are are we ready to go back to this discussion on four versus five, or do we need?
Well, if we're looking at them all together, so that's the thing, is if you're looking at them all together, then you can start to like, that's that's where I am with it all, I need to see it all together.
Finish up our mission.
Right.
I think they just settle on our mission. Do we wanna throw it up there? I don't know.
I think creativity or empowerment, I think I could go either way, getting rid of creativity or empowerment, and then incorporating either of those into the vision or the mission.
Yeah.
But we just said we want to simplify the vision and mission.
Well.
So I'd almost rather have more succinct vision than mission, and then have five values.
Hmm, 'cause that's where there's a little bit more bulk.
Yeah, that's where we have more detail, and you can list four or five without their definitions, super quick and easy, and be like boom, 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 and then go to more detail.
More dimension and detail.
But I think that to me is easier than making it a really long vision statement that my brain turns off.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
You know, six words in and I'm not paying attention anymore.
So you're saying ke- keep these definitions good, ke- keep all the detail in the definitions, is that what you're saying?
That's my suggestion.
Keep it in keeping five, like it's okay to have a a another one.
Oh.
That's my suggestion, I'm leaning right now towards the five with the definitions and a more succinct vision and mission.
Okay. So are we keeping lifelong learning and lifelong learning then, if we're gonna keep them all?
No.
No.
Well, no, we'll take that out of the definition, right?
Yeah, we would take it out of the definition.
Okay. Encouraging innovation.
So we want, so do we wanna make vision more succinct? Provo City School District is a vibrant learning community where all students become lifelong learners?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, yep.
Well, I could stop. I'm just gonna capitalize this, if anyone cares.
You're suggesting.
Oh, yeah, you can, sorry, I I didn't share, I, I'll do it if you want, I'll set it on.
Oh, yeah, you can do it, you don't have to. So if we're, if we're keeping things the way they are now, so now what we're looking at is lifelong learning, like replacing the lifelong learning?
In creativity.
In creativity, in the definition of creativity.
Oh.
So that, yeah, so that definition of creativity is basically what a lot of what we have in our vision statement, so that means we could eliminate creativity as one, if we wanna go down to four, or we could rewrite our definition of creativity if we feel like we wanna stick to five.
'Cause innovation is in growth, right?
Yeah.
If innovation's in growth, lifelong learning is in the vision statement, so what we're we're critical thinking and curiosity and problem solving.
And inspire is very much like.
And you could put critical thinking and empowerment.
Yeah, that's true.
If you get a list of more than about three things, I think you lose a reader, lose me.
Yeah. You mean, didn't it?
I just said all missions, like we're going to have three things.
And yeah, like if it's me, I say we get rid of creativity. Don't throw tomatoes at me.
No creativity in our district.
No, I'm not saying that we that we're not creative, but it's what, it doesn't have to be one of our core values, it's the, it's, I mean, it's encompassed in growth, you have to be creative to grow, you have to be creative to be empower-
Just the word.
I mean, empowerment fosters creativity, like there's more.
I'm gonna make an argument for creativity and here it comes, I want a little whimsy and I want a little fun in this, and I want it to be, I mean, I I just like that it balances like these heavy words like growth and empowerment, I just feel like
Okay. Mm. Yeah. Yeah.
creativity kind of is a light thing that says like, there's an art to this, and there is joy to this.
There's joy in the classroom.
And I think, yeah. And inspire and empowerment can be very similar too, right?
Let's speak to it. Mm-hmm.
So if we are thinking of getting rid of one.
I don't wanna get rid of either one.
I think we can have five values.
I'm fine with five values. I mean, if you could take the values by just each word, or you, if you wanna read more of the definitions, they can do that too, but you can sort of.
Yeah. And I don't have a problem with lifelong learning being up there twice, because I don't know how many people are gonna sit and read this in order anyway.
It doesn't make sense to to go.
I still would, it would bug me, I can't be your, it would bother me if you're having that.
If you take it out, I think you rewrite the whole thing, that's what I would say, 'cause it it doesn't hold up otherwise, which is fine, I'm fine with rewriting, I'm just saying, you can't really just clip that piece and make that.
Yeah.
Lifelong learning is important enough, we can mention it twice.
I agree.
If you if you took it out creativity, I think you could just do encouraging innovation, curiosity, imagination, I think you should leave that in, critical thinking, and problem solving.
Yeah. You want to say to do what you're gonna do with those skills, become a lifelong learner.
You could say encouraging innovation, curiosity, and critical thinking to develop problem solvings, there you go. Yeah.
This is development.
Develop.
But I wouldn't, I'm just trying to lighten the mood a lot.
Is there anything, I I don't know that we need to make it any longer necessarily, but it it feels like that's really like laser focused on problem solving skills.
Problem, I, that's my problem with it.
Yeah.
'Cause creativity is really about everything, I don't know.
Should we print something while having fun or while drawing learning?
Problem solving skills and having joy in life.
Well, are you just.
We could just put a period after critical thinking and say encouraging innovation, curiosity, imagination, and critical thinking.
Put a period after critical thinking and say encouraging innovation, curiosity, imagination, and critical thinking.
That's what.
True.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, we're about to converse, what do you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, basically that, so we come solving skills by just problem solving skills is is critical thinking, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's a result of. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Um, can we keep imagination? Do we have to get that, or is it?
You can if you take the rest of that. That.
That disne- disneyfies it too.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Give the little Disney.
Like the Mickey Monsters on the front shirt and.
Yeah.
Mickey Monsters just become public domain.
No, Lisa, if you keep curiosity back, it's disagree.
Oh.
I did, um, yeah, why, how did I get to be the actor or not?
It's not a good idea.
I guess I wanna go home, watch your eyes.
I'm like, you are big. Don't feel any pressure.
Encouraging innovation, curiosity, imagination, I like breaking up this um. Innovation, curiosity, imagination, critical thinking.
Yeah.
I don't know, what?
Innovation.
I don't know, there's two, um, so. Um, back to the vision statement, I think it was good to simplify, but now I feel like none of what I thought was inspiring, it's now, it becomes lifelong learners, like it feel like. I don't know, I didn't think that. We need to choose it up again. It did say where all students develop and apply the curiosity, skills, and habits of lifelong learning.
But the, I think that was taking us into the mission, like what we're going to be in the future.
Mm-hmm. This is, yes.
What do we want them to become?
How many is the vision?
Is is there a?
I don't. We had a bunch of stuff, we had a lot of talk about being good citizens, like we want our people to become lifelong learners and good engaged citizens, we can add something like that there if we want to add more into the vision.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
What was the, you said something about serve, I really liked whatever it was you had originally about serve.
The relationship.
Mm-hmm. Make a positive difference to the lives of other people, yeah.
Um, what I have was. Yeah, our success is built on a partnership of educators, families, and community members that is committed to providing the means for Provo's children to create happy, that's all that's on. Um, underserved makes a positive difference in the lives of other people, that was just under learn, think, create, serve, that was what came after serve.
Do you, do maybe, what about positive impact, it's like difference.
Yeah.
Of hers. Make a positive impact?
Yeah.
Do you want anything about them being educated really good? Really well. It's really wonderful, I need to use this T-shirt.
Start a team, start a, don't worry, and get straight.
Being educated really good is overrated.
I'm gonna go with that tomorrow.
Look, if we do this long enough, all of our brains turn to mush, right, so.
It's happening. Why don't we say in the world and make a positive impact, or in, I don't know, or just positive impact, I just think if we start it.
I think you give me the positive impact.
Yeah.
Does, is there enough education in there? I think I agree with that, like, oh, boy.
Yeah, we need to make sure we, we have that in the growth of the academic rigor, but.
What's one for us?
The lifelong learner.
Does it need to be in?
And the mission.
Oh, the lifelong learners is the part where they where they're educated and they're continuing to learn, right? We could say.
And the mission is how we're getting there and educate, yeah.
Mm-hmm, education is in there, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And that's a lot of effort, uh, working hard.
Mm.
I'm actually okay with the vision statement having more words.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because everything else is so short, otherwise it's gonna be like very dry.
It's slosh.
Very concise.
Mm.
Yeah, I.
So we could put back.
We need to fix the the grammar though.
We're.
Uh, by the curiosity skills and habits of lifelong learners.
Yeah.
Some lifelong learners.
We could stick that back in.
Or if we're gonna say impact, we just have to.
It just tends to be said it's more.
Yeah. Difference can be, I was just.
Yeah. I don't have no.
Which one is the now?
So the the different word.
The vision.
The vision.
No, not the im- I'm just saying there isn't an impact, like if we start listing out more things, the vision statement to me is this, and it's, I don't know.
Mm. But do we want them to become more than just lifelong learners? We want, 'cause we had talked a lot about in, especially in steering committee, like them being like good citizens, good people, right, those who are.
Just.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. With making positive difference.
Well, it's a way to say.
Well, enough of being an eng- can you engage citizens in a comfort class?
Can we say this in a.
Can't you just say lifelong learners and engaged citizens?
Yeah, that's better. Be done. As much as I'm all about promoting kindness to others, I think you can incorporate that into the engaged citizen.
About. Well, how about enter to learn, go forth to serve?
It came to me.
Love it!
I love that one.
Aye.
Brilliant.
We're gonna owe you, we're all worth your money.
He doesn't burn.
I can't be on the hook for royalty. Have to be careful.
What if we say community member or something like that?
I could say engaged humans.
We could end great people, that's what we want, we want it to be really, really awesome people.
Engaged residents.
You could flip engaged citizens and lifelong learners.
Yeah, that that feels better to me, I like, I mean, I don't know.
Engaged citizens and lifelong learners.
Kind of doing like lifelong learners instead of.
Engaged citizens.
Mm-hmm.
I do like engaged community members more than.
There you go, I like that too, I like that better.
Yeah. I think, yeah.
Engaged citizens and.
I think engaged community members embodies what it means to be an engaged citizen, but it's by alienating.
Entry works.
Oh, yeah, then we say community twice.
Vibrant, learning.
Learning. Arena.
Oh, wow, yeah. I have mine, so I'm gonna put them back, I don't know if I can do that.
Oh, but if I just.
We do want to be good at that. It's a fight for every student.
Anyone observing, feel free to pipe in with a word.
Yes. All my pure input.
People.
This was me at the.
That we get assembly last summer.
I was. Oh.
Alright, I'm back, and I'm like it.
Mm, anybody else getting a call right now that their child was tardy today?
Me, my system is working.
Right, oh, spot on.
There it is, two, I get two, I get Dave's call and my call.
That's just none of mine.
I like you.
Engaged humans.
I do like engaged humans.
I do like engaged humans, I'm not gonna lie, it's just.
What about engaged people?
Engaged.
Human selves.
Engaged individuals.
Individuals.
Yeah, there you go.
But that's.
It's.
Makes it sound like we don't like other people.
Yeah. The whole idea is we want them contributing positively to their to their community or to their environment, right, we want people to be educated and contributors.
Okay, hold on.
Contribute to a community or contribute to their community.
Good neighbors. Good neighbors or.
Statehood.
Like a neighbor.
Well, all students contribute to their community, become lifelong learners, contribute to their community.
PCST is there.
Yeah.
I mean, they contribute to their communities and become lifelong learners.
Yeah, you contribute to.
Contribute to, yeah, 'cause that sounds better.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Con- to contribute to communities and become lifelong learners.
Except communities then, still in the process.
But do we want to say contribute positively?
Mm.
But everyone contributes to community.
Learning from our students.
Everyone does by default, some don't always contribute positively.
Contribute in some manner.
Contributing members of society.
I think it's implied contributing by.
Yeah.
But it would be a positive.
Okay, someone tell me which slide I.
My brain's mush.
Contribute to society. That's what. Yeah.
I don't know.
Um, society might have negative connotations, so.
Well, society has negative connotations.
Of like, oh, you're not providing for society or something, I don't know, community is softer.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. We already said community.
Yeah.
I'm leaving it here for now, anyone who wants to add words, can email us.
I'm.
Some people contribute to their.
What if you said promo city school district provides a vibrant learning environment where all students become lifelong learners and engaged community members?
Yeah. Yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay.
Done.
I would say provides a vibrant learning environment, or you could say is a vibrant learning environment, that's great.
Yeah, anyways. There we go.
Perfect.
Okay.
Good job.
We're taking opportunity. Now, do we wanna go back and argue about how many core values we have?
Keep five.
No, just keep the five.
We're we're good, we can edit if we need to down the road, I think.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, are we good?
Mm.
Okay.
Here's a fun fact, I'm having a fabulous time.
What?
Alright, I think.
Alright, great.
We really are taking this seriously, like, I don't want my public to think we're being too ser- too.
All they have to do is look at it, it's fabulous.
Yeah, no, I think.
Some of you have been involved in a lot of the discussion.
Let's do our survey.
Okay.
Might be tired of the survey.
If we if we can go back to the main slide deck, we're gonna just look at the survey results.
Oh, let me um, stop sharing, sorry.
Okay, great, so let's keep moving forward. Okay, so now the survey results, we um, sent out a giant survey and got one thousand thirty-eight responses. You can see the total numbers over on the side, five hundred and eighty-one um, parents responded, three hundred and three employees, eighty-one parents who are also employees, fifty-nine students and fourteen community members. And if we go to the next slide.
Is that a good number of responses for the size of our district?
Well, we typically tell districts to think about what they typically get for surveys. Um, I will share, usually we see higher numbers of students fill it out because we usually get the high schools to try to have the students do it like in a class.
Okay.
There's a law coming out about that.
Okay.
Tell you about later.
Okay, okay, well.
Be allowed to do it.
Okay, well, um, but anyway, it I mean, it it is what it is, and I I think you all can determine if that's typical for what you usually get on surveys. Uh, but here are the overall, um, this is like the overall top five things that people think we should focus on in the next in the next couple of years, five years. Over on the left, you see all the different choices and kind of what percentages they got, and over on the right, we've ranked the top five in order. So overall, the top five things this community believes that we should focus on in the next five years are mental health, social emotional wellness, student performance in math and reading, that's on grade level, ensuring opportunities for all learners, high school readiness, graduation, postgraduate success and school safety. But we also wanted to show you um, the results broken down by different groups, so you can just kind of have it have an idea of how different people ranked it, so let's go to the next one. So for parents, um, and what you're gonna see is most of the top five kind of are pretty much the same, sometimes the order mixes up. Uh, but their number one was high school readiness, graduation, postgraduate success, then mental health and wellness, then student performance in reading and math, school safety, and then ensuring all opportunities, opportunities for all students, so same same five, just in slightly different order. Uh, next slide, employees. Um, number one was employee recruitment and retention, so that's something that, you know, wasn't overall, but definitely is important to our employees. And then ensuring opportunities for all student learners, performance in reading and math, and mental health, social emotional wellness and school safety. Okay, next slide, uh, parents and employees, again, employee recruitment and retention, mental health, ensuring opportunities for all student learners, performance in math and reading, school safety, so we're seeing the same things kind of over and over. Uh, next one, students, uh, mental health and social emotional wellness was their number one, then student performance in reading and math, school safety, ensuring opportunities for all learners and high school readiness, graduation, postgraduate success. And last, community members, um, employee recruitment and retention, ensuring opportunities for all student learners, mental health, school safety, expanding school choice and career programs, um, and access to advanced coursework.
Interesting.
So, um, next slide, I think that was it, about our survey, so just so you know what we're doing is with the steering committee, we are looking at the data, we're also doing a deep dive into district data, so we looked at academic data at this last meeting. Coming up, we're gonna be looking at um, HR data, discipline data, attendance data, just other pieces. And we are identifying what we believe should be the top five priorities based on the survey and kind of what we're seeing in the data. And then from there, we'll drill down and start to build um, in about three to five goals under each priority area, so that's kind of where we're going next with the steering committee. And next time we come back, we should be able to bring you draft priorities and goals for your feedback. So I'll just open up, any questions that anyone has? Yes.
So that's kind of along the lines of the question I was bringing ahead, so the survey is to help direct our more like next three to five year goals and the work we just did previous with the vision mission is like the overarching, not affected by necessarily the results of the survey or the correct data.
Correct, the the survey is to help determine the priority areas for the next three to five years.
Okay.
Is it is it a good idea to see if our core values kind of match what, you know, what we're seeing in the survey? 'Cause that's what I was just trying to do, is we're looking at the surveys at the top five, seeing how they fit into like our core values or our vision or our mission, is that a good thing to do? Or should we just let it drive our priorities?
Well, we do want overall alignment between the different areas, um, and I think probably the most important piece is to make sure that the community knows we're listening and that they're gonna see their feedback reflected in the strategic plan. We will see their feedback reflected in the priorities and goals, but I I do think it's helpful to look at kind of the overall alignment between vision, mission and core values and whether that's, whether the goals and things that we're building on are helping us to get there.
And I was thinking about that a lot, like looking through this data, and I I feel like one way, one way we can think about that is like, we have these core values about kind of who we are as a district, right, and what we value. As we're working on our goals, as we're as we're coming up with specific plans and measurable things, those things should reflect our values, right, like, but they don't. I I think the values can align with any goal you set, it's more about who you are as you approach those goals.
I think the other place that we'll we'll need to see alignment is as we um, continue to work on the portrait of a graduate, making sure that the goals we set are helping us to build graduates with those skills, and so we'll we'll check for that alignment as we get a little further down that path and get the like some definitions drafted out and some words. So we've gathered some feedback, but we'll wanna gather additional feedback from the focus groups that we're gonna set up, so that's why we we've kind of hit pause on that until we can do focus groups.
Yeah, when would the focus groups be?
So, um, I will need, I'm working with Wendy and Jason to set those up, so uh, they'll be able to identify when is a good time to do focus groups and then um, we'll do a variety, we'll do some for teachers, students, families, community members, principals, um, central office workers, so we'll do lots of different ones.
It feels hard to set goals before we have a clear portrait of the graduate. For me, I just feel like that should come first if it can, I don't know if it can, but just because what are you trying to have happen? Like, that that question drives then the goals you set, et cetera, like, that should be, and maybe that's the vision. I feel like our vision and our portrait of the graduate need to be kind of wrapped up together, so that, I don't know.
Yeah, I think ideally it it would come first, I think what we're wrestling with is trying to meet the timeline that we originally agreed to, and so some of those pieces have just been moving, and so if we're gonna stick with the same timeline, we're just a little bit behind on um, you know, kind of when when we're finishing that, but uh, we've also seen districts finish it a little later in the process and then at in the end phases, talk about like, are we seeing the alignment or do modifications need to be made? So that's probably where we'll end up going.
Okay, any further questions for Amara?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much for.
No, thank you, I'm glad we landed on, so draft, it's perfect, okay.
We're ahead of schedule, relax, okay.
Okay.
We did such a good job, we're ahead of schedule.
Still?
Excellent.
Well, except we have to go back and do construction update.
Good to do construction update, okay, in seven minutes.
Yes.
Oh, so then we have to, okay, we're not, no.
So we're a little bit behind, but.
Sorry, three minutes.
Yeah, we've done this before, we know what's.
That's the end of it.
Okay, alright, so if we could go ahead and move back now to item number seven, that's where we're gonna go ahead and do our construction update.
Here we are.
Okay, right.
Do you have chat? Alright, thank you.
Alright, um, Timpview, let's start with Timpview. Start with the bad news of Timpview. The administration office.
Is there any good news?
Timpview is a struggle.
Not saying it, actually.
There's lots of good news.
There is a lot of good news, progress is being made.
There's a lot of stuff happening.
I'm sure everyone is aware of what happened in the administration office, there, they did an initial cut, we couldn't figure out where the water was coming. Where they separated the building was probably about eighty, ninety feet away. And so, we did not anticipate any of this to happen. Uh, status of it now, it is dry, it's also dry outside, it's supposed to rain again Thursday, so we'll we'll test that, but is if we're cautiously optimistic, we ha- they have it addressed and should be about three weeks before they can get vacuumed. Uh, next one.
Sorry, is this the place to ask, how do we avoid this in the future, or is that coming?
I'm getting there.
Okay.
Yes. So this is what we did, so we got, you can see clear up there, that's the cut that they did right before the snowstorm. So how it got over there, we don't know, so to try to stop, oh, they did this cut, so here's the administration right here, here's the old main entry, and so they completely separated the building right here, so that if any water is coming, it's gonna go down here instead of go over there. Next one. So yeah, this is the inside of it, there's that cut that they made right there, so.
Wait, the idea is that the water will just come in there?
Will just come in here, 'cause all of this will be demolished, this remains, all of this is demolished, so we don't really care if this gets wet.
So just by ma- so I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure I understand, so by making that cut, we're we've now ensured it's not gonna go into the office anymore, right, this is a new.
That's the theory.
That's the hope, okay.
This new cut here, because the cut before, somehow it got down into the roofing system, made its way over, but this cut then separates that pathway, so there should be nothing new coming.
And the grading right here is such that if water's coming in, it's gonna not impact those walls that are stained?
Yes, right. But yeah, the area orbit administration is the lowest point of that roof, that's right where all those storm drains are, so anything does go there, but from what they're demolishing, this should now be completely separated.
And we'll test our theory on Thursday.
And we'll test it on Thursday.
Okay.
Current status of demolition, so yeah, there's that, the initial cut they made there, and then this is the new one to separate from the administration.
Okay.
Next one. So this is.
Can I ask really quick, Chuck?
Go for it.
The initial cut, what did we do to remedy that?
That's all in an area to be demolished, so that's.
Even the initial cut, I guess.
Correct.
So, okay.
So that's, yeah, they'll, they're actually probably present here, so they're just gonna keep going to that point and tear all that.
And where was, how, can you explain how the water was getting from that cut over there, or?
Where was the initial cut?
I wish I.
No, we don't know.
So if we don't know how it was getting there, how do we feel like we've solved that?
So they've gone up, yeah, they did this cut to separate anything old, they've gone through, they've checked all the storm drains, the low points here, they've double checked the roof, they've had their roofers coming out, check it.
Man, that cut.
They made sure all the drains are flowing and not clogged up, they put some sandbags around there, so.
Okay.
So it's still just not very clear why it wouldn't.
Correct.
That's a large volume of water.
Not very lot of water. Yes. Okay, next one, so these are the areas still to be demolished, and so to answer your question, go to the next one. So showing you, yeah, each one of these areas, go to the next one, and looking at this way, this is looking at that view there, so this is new construction that was done in the previous phase. Planned with this to be demolished, so those are two completely separate systems, so there will not be any leaking there, next one. Same thing right there, this is the, yeah, this is the new section, the old section, you can see it's already completely separated and has been for a while. Next one. Same thing there. Separated. Completely different buildings, basically. And next one. Just another view of that, in that area, looking at the side to show that it is already separated. And this is all the new construction.
So did you give a percent, is it like about fifty percent demolished, is that what you're saying, or?
It's um, yeah, it's about fifty percent, but it's gonna be a lot slower getting in here next to those spaces, it's gonna have to be a lot more deli- delicate. This is going to be the area that needs to be the most delicate, this is being demolished, this is the cafeteria. So separating this, this is a higher level, um, the water slips that way, it has that the edge there, this separates this way, there should not be water leak there, but this is this is gonna be a sensitive area. And yeah, we were talking about in the last meeting, just how it's gonna be addressed. Just thought that was kind of a cool picture.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we need that in our history book.
We still have the ugly sweater stack up there.
With the chair, it's like, that needs to be on the chair. Yeah, chair just sitting there.
Yeah. Okay. Next one. Good news on the progress on the new, we have the bleachers, um, all the steel is up, there still is gonna be, uh, the box up here, um, but it's huge, it's gonna seat a lot of people.
You remind me, is that the concessions underneath it?
No, that is the lockers.
Oh, okay.
Underneath.
Okay.
And public restrooms too?
And restrooms, correct. Next one. And that's the concessions building, so it's over to the side of it.
Oh, okay.
So it's got its, the roofing material on now, so it's getting dried in and getting finished on the inside. Other questions on Timpview? Okay, Wasatch.
Sorry, I do have one question.
Yes.
So where are, I know what's like thirty-five-ish employees were displaced, where are they able to work now?
In different areas, uh, there is one hallway by the auditorium, but we were about to take a temporary, you're down, but they're using that now as an office space. There's been discussions of the auditorium foyer being used, um, we were hoping there at the top of the learning stair to be able to use that, unfortunately, we just got word from the fire marshal yesterday, we cannot do that until the whole commons is done.
Whole common system. So are we planning to repair the ceiling tiles that fell in and give them back to our offices?
Yes, in about three weeks, there are, the electrician's already been going through and getting.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear.
And then the ceiling tiles are already going back in, so.
Thank you.
Wait, dare ask the cost? Wait, dare ask the cost?
The contractor is taking responsibility for it. So it's no cost to the district.
Fantastic, thank you.
There's a lot of, there are a few, like kind of more forward-facing staff that are now in the great hall.
In the great hall, that's the one?
Yeah, and now counseling's in the library.
Did this affect any of the new build that we had at the very front of the office, like the tenants' office and the-
No.
No, that was all okay in that area? They're still able to work in those?
They, they are able to. They moved out just because the power was off for a while. And just to keep the whole administration together, they did all move out together. Wasatch, this is looking at the north end of the building. So masonry is almost done. Should be topped out next week. Next one. Just looking at the entry, the main entry with the two wings on the side. And the next one. And the south side is topped out. So that's, it's max height. And next one. Just an overall picture of it. Next one. Uh, go back two slides. I want to show something else real quick. That one. We even have all of our steel in for the roof. So we'll be getting the roof in soon. So the steel is falling very close behind them. And we have all the steel on site. The fencing is starting to go in on all the retaining walls. Next one. That large staircase at the front, we've got concrete yesterday. So that one's, that area is done. Yeah, there's no removal. It's going to be in that round then. Yeah.
So will that be dry by the time, by Thursday?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, it, it'll be. It's been warm enough. They haven't even had to cover it. But yeah, it'll be dry for sure by Thursday. Uh, next one. So this is the inside on the first floor. Framing is going fast. They've got all the framing in on the, on the first, on the south end. And now, no, well, actually, yeah, both, pretty much the whole first floor is framed out. And the mechanical lines are going in, electrical's going in. Next one. Yeah, the electrical panels, starting to pull the wiring on the first floor. This is the second floor. So they're going up floor by floor. So the second floor now, you can see they're starting to prep to get the mechanical stuff. Mechanical ducts put in. So they'll move up to the, to that floor and then up to the third. Next one. Oh yeah, there's another picture of that. Steel for the roof. Next. Oh, this is something I just thought through and that I think is a neat feature that the contractor's providing. So they go in every few weeks and they'll take a picture, a 3D image from the same spot. So you can click on any one of these. So go into one.
Can we put this in our whips?
Should be able to. Yeah, it's all online. So yeah, this is in this classroom right here, back in October. And it's a three-six one, but yet this just shows one angle. Then the next one. Same spot in November. Next one. Same spot in January. Then the next one. Same spot in the end of January. So you can see the progress. And it's a great tool for the future to see, you know, once the ceiling's up, you can go back and look at this. Go, oh, there's that fire sprinkling line right there. You'll be able to see all the plumbing lines, electrical lines, exact location of all of them. Next. Help the aerial, or the drone hit next. So the... One of the biggest issues, concerns that we have right now is the mechanical units. Shortage on supplies and labor. They, it should not cause us, what it's going to hold up is being able to put our roof on. We were expecting to get it around the end of March. It's not going to be probably mid-June when we get the mechanical units. And then the... The stage here area, that concrete's going to be poured next week. So it's, it's moving along. Any questions on it? Yes.
So this mechanical delay, you don't think they'll delay the opening of the school?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, because our longest lead item, that's still not coming until September, is the electrical gap.
Okay.
So it's, any delay it costs is being able to get the roof in, completely dried in, to do all the finishes, final finishes that can't get wet. This was news that we heard actually just this morning. So they're still trying to look at schedule and how they're going to work around it. But I don't think it's going to delay the entire project.
Gina, did you have a-
That was, that was it. How much did you delay those things?
I have a question. Can we, on Wasatch, excuse me? Well, kind of back when we were talking about the big wall in the front, we had talked about possibly getting some renderings of what it might look like with landscaping. So we can see how it will be presented in the end. And if we can kind of help calm some fears for people on that massive wall. And I don't remember ever seeing any. Did we ever?
And that came up in our meeting.
We saw some.
You did see some?
Yeah, we did. We had pretty amazing.
I remember seeing fences.
Um, I think it was a meeting where you were-
Is that called?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I'll look for it and we'll talk. Yeah, I'll find it, we'll find it.
Okay. Okay.
Shoreline's moving along, moving along great. Already starting to put into landscaping. They got the couple here and getting the rest of the landscaping going. Looking real quick through each of one of the areas. Next one, in area A, they are, they've got paint, they've got ceiling tiles in. The hallway, still finishing up all the utilities running down that hallway. But it's looking good. Area B. Is starting to get the tile for the bathroom, starting to get the cabinets, starting to go in. So they're both making good progress. Area C. Is getting sheet rock, getting the drywall on. So it's all moving along well. Next one. Area D, the entire roof now is completely on, completely done.
For the whole school?
For the whole school, yeah. So this was the last area where they were doing the roof. They got that all figured out. So now they're starting to do their interior framing and even starting to get the sheetrock on. The learning stair is getting formed up and, before it was nothing there. So it's moving along. Cafeteria. Getting some of the final finishes. The kitchen's looking great. Getting the rolling doors on.
Could you go back real quick? Can you remind me, what's above the cafeteria? What's up there? Is that the library?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it kind of opens out into the library, yeah. Next. Auditorium still has that, what they call that dance floor in there. So they're still working on the ceiling stuff up above. But in the entry, you can see we got more glass in. They still need to do this entry, this would be old. But again, starting to get the framing. So we'll, next time, we'll probably start seeing the sheetrock on that.
Can I ask a question? How many entries are there at the school?
So there's the auditorium entry, and then this is going to be the main entry here, in the administration here.
Aren't there entries out on the back, on the ends of the leaves?
On the east side.
Yeah, you do have here the gymnasium area, outside into the cafeteria. Exits have to be on each one of the-
Well, and the bus is on that area, goes into area B, right?
Mm-hmm, right. Okay, and then the music department, we're getting carpet in. They've got all the storage in. And millwork is going. So it's, it's pretty much done in that area. Final finishes. Questions? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Are we going straight into it?
Yes, we're going straight into this.
Straight into your soul.
Okay, and I'm going to bring Dean Cox, principal architect with BCBO, and Scott Roche, principal structural engineer with Enzyme.
This was the kind of the design that we had before.
They'll be able to answer questions, I can.
Perfect, welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for sitting through our strategic plan. I would like to run that session of wordsmithing.
So there's a lot of information. So please, if, I'm trying to keep a high level, but still complete. But please stop with any questions anytime. So where we went into this doing? Examining the existing spaces, the remaining spaces that have not been remodeled, looking specifically at the structural condition of them.
So this is for Timpview?
This is Timpview, yes. And then looking also at how the space actually functions to meet their needs. With the goal to determine whether each space should be, get a light remodel, just kind of finishes, update finishes. Remodel, going in, upgrading all the seismic and structural, for seismic compliance and all the structural. Or if it just needs to be torn down and start doing. And then gauge an interest to do it now or wait. Everybody we talked to said, go for it now. We're, we're ready to go. So these are the areas we looked at. Performing arts, the auditorium, the music classes, administration, cafeteria, and then the east wing. The first level that east wing was done, currently recently done, but then the second and third floor were not done. And the first floor, when they did the first floor, they did not do any structural upgrades.
It was just a remodel.
It was just a light remodel.
Yeah, that's, basically, yeah.
Yeah. So on the structural side, we looked back at all the different reports and the findings that have been done in the past. Looking at what was previously discovered. And then Scott came, we did discover during construction, when we were working on the administration area, some structural concerns. And so then Scott put together an amended structural assessment after we went out and did the side business sidewalk a couple of weeks ago. So next one, on the function process, how we talked about how the space works for them, if it meets our needs or not. We did a kind of a brainstorming. We just asked everybody, what's your pain points? What works, what doesn't? What would make things better? And we just wrote everything down on these cards. And then at the end, we had them come up and vote. Green is an absolute must.
So this is staff you're talking to?
This, we met with all the department heads for each one of these areas.
Because I seriously doubt you have a flag in your office, right?
Mm-hmm.
This was a classroom?
No, so this, we were meeting in all the, in the administration conference room. This was our last meeting after the conference room was flooded. So it had to be flooded. So next one.
Sorry, I interrupted you with the dots.
Green is, it's an absolute must. This is a goal that needs to be met. This needs to be done, or it's really not even work doing the project. Yellow is, it's important, but it's not that top of high priority. And the red is, don't worry about it. We don't, we don't care about that.
The golf simulator, huh?
It got one green vote from the one who said they wanted it. Next one. So looking at administration first. Good the next. Scott, I'm going to let you talk about these.
So these are just some pictures that were taken during construction, during a remodel of part of this area. And you can see, masonry walls need to have grout inside of them, especially where the rebar is. In many areas that were exposed during this remodel, the rebar was ungrouted, just floating around inside there, which is a bad sign. And you can see that in the picture on the left. The picture on the right, we're putting embed plates in. They needed to be into solid granite cells. There's no masonry in some of those areas. So, and you can also see in this picture on the right that there's some, I can see it out if you guys can. On the bottom of it, there's clay masonry. And on the top of it, there's-
You see it on the left?
Concrete masonry. Clay masonry and concrete masonry don't play well together. They expand and contract at different rates. So they're-
In the seventies, that was used as a technique to save money. Clay brick is more expensive than CMU. And so the CMU is up above ceilings and spaces like that. Today, we recognize that that's not best practice. And so when we see things like that, it's ungrouted and it's unreinforced, doesn't make this very compatible, not a very thing.
So was the ungrouted also like a practice and said like typical? Or is that, did we get like bad construction work? Someone made a mistake.
When Scott did the analysis that you all paid the engineer to do in 2019, that evaluation was done based on the drawing, or what we call as-built. So when the building was originally built, they would have updated documents to reflect what was actually constructed. And then that goes to the district for the maintenance of the building. And those documents, all of that reinforcing is there and it's grounded. So during construction, the contractor started cutting the building open and suddenly realized that rebar's rattling around in empty cells. And called Scott to come out and look at it. And then he updated his evaluation based on that actual understanding.
And we couldn't have known that until we cut into it, right?
Unless you x-rayed the whole building, you just wouldn't have noticed.
But it was assumed that it was grounded because it should have been, but it wasn't.
There's no point to put rebar in that. It's literally wasted money. There's no point to put it there unless there's ground. So it just got forgotten or something happened. We can't explain why it's not grounded.
And right now, we only know it's in this area?
Well, in this particular case, we replaced the wall. So it's no longer there. But this happened in the admin wing extensively. And the same details and construction type is in the choir room and the performing arts area.
So we don't know if it is or isn't grounded in?
Correct. The only way you would know that is to have a side scan x-ray machine go and scan about every thirty-two inches of all of the masonry. And it would take a lot of time. The assumption is if it was missed on about a thirty-foot wall, it's likely that it happens elsewhere.
So when you say it's not good, or I'm assuming that means safety was?
Yeah.
Seismic, is that our main concern when it comes to safety?
So if you remember, there's no ground, gravity is a concern of mine as well. I mean, it's just-
If you remember when you, when you originally decided to move forward with the modified replacement of the high school. So it wasn't the whole high school replacement, it was a scaled back version. That was tailored simply to the areas that had major settlement issues because of soil problems, right? The only reason that this area, the auditorium, performing arts, didn't land on that same list was that it didn't show signs of settlement. Right? And so the idea was, okay, you have time to work on that part. The areas with substantial settlement, we need to fix now. Now that we get into this part, it really starts to reopen that question. Because the idea that this was a seismically sound, as we assumed, is not the case.
Next one.
This is a great picture there in that corner. You can see the masonry at the ninety-degree corner, which is really one of your most important corners in a structure wall. And it's loose rebar in that spot.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're good. Yes. Okay, now next. You mentioned we didn't find settlement. We didn't see the movement or as much of the collapsible swells. Again, this-
Originally.
We now found it.
And where is that?
This is a foyer over by the new commons that we had to tear out. And-
Right by the cafeteria that goes north to that new courtyard?
Yeah.
That's that, that's the view.
And there is not supposed to be a gap there.
Where we, going back to that 2019 report, the evaluation was based on a, a survey that was done of the top surface of the concrete slab. So insights crews went through and surveyed the floor surface. There's really no way to determine whether there's soil beneath the concrete unless you see cracks. So this was a shocker to us. Because that slab, I still don't know how it stayed up there. It was about twelve feet wide by about eight feet deep. It's a large piece of concrete.
Particularly if it had a crack or something, if there's nothing-
Remind me where this is again, the building?
Over by the entry to the side of the cafeteria and the new commons?
From the north.
From the north.
So that's right through that masonry wall right there would be your cafeteria area. And out this way would be going towards the delivery areas on that north end. You're in that courtyard right now.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, you said that we had to tear up a core there that we did and-
No, that was existing.
It was existing, right.
Where that mechanical unit on the wall is, there was some piping that the contractor had to get to. And so as they started to dig in to get to that piping, they found this hole and started chasing back and realized the whole thing was unsupported.
So just, there's just a big open cabin under the old commons?
That happens when the soil consolidates. That happens when the soil consolidates.
Are we seeing any of this underneath the building?
Existing building. We haven't gone and done any destructive testing to check it. We've replaced what we found, the areas that are replaced, that's all on helical piers, so you're not gonna, it really isn't a matter at that point, right? The other areas of the building, we just don't know.
We would know, you say destructive testing, meaning tearing holes in the concrete floor and looking underneath?
Yeah, digging down to the bottom of the foundations, or tearing holes on the walls. You can, the x-ray, the scanning is the best for the walls without, you can't overturn, but to get down to the foundation, we'd have to dig down.
But this is not giving us a really great, like, optimistic feel about what might be underneath?
No. What we're seeing, we're using that to extrapolate the likelihood that there's more of it. And our conclusion is that's a pretty fair assessment based on what we've seen as the demolitions happen in other areas.
And the history of the whole site anyways, right? There's plenty of collapsible soil.
And if you're, yes, the collapsible soil was everywhere, the issue is the water that gets introduced. If you remember in that 2019 report, the water had started at the southeast end of the property and worked its way towards the northwest corner. But it hadn't demonstrated that it had gotten that far. So the idea was, let's put in a storm drain system, collect it and try and catch it before it ever gets there, to protect what currently hadn't shown settlement issues. Right? So the idea was, we're trying to stop that and let you buy some time to be able to deal with other stuff.
And then they even monitored the width of those cracks for about a six-month period after that leak was stopped and was done, and it didn't show any new movement.
So at the time, we thought that the storm drain was effective, essentially?
The storm drain was effective in buying you time.
Sure.
Right? Because we're talking groundwater, it's really difficult to really control where it goes. But we know that we're controlling it against the building and at the footing line, so we knew that was gonna buy you some time.
So this is probably pre-storm drain?
Oh, for sure.
Should we assume that?
For sure.
Okay. So that's structure, when it comes to the function, from the voting that they did, centralized location and entrance was by far the top priority. Being connected to the students, natural daylight, they're kind of in an area, we could solve it with skylights, but the the design of it really can't provide that. A faculty room for a hundred and fifty people to meet, there is currently no space for them. They, I think they do it in auditorium now. Functional nurse, nursing space, functional storage, and maintain a connection between counseling and main office. So frank, next one. So frankly, because of the concerns that we've seen on the new construction, we know to go through and regrout those, do the upgrades needed, it would be much more expensive than new construction. And given that you add in the cost of the mechanical plumbing systems, it's still the original galvanized pipe. And that, really, they've grown out of that space. It doesn't meet their needs functionally, so we do recommend a replacement.
Our rule of thumb in the industry is when you hit the seventy percent of the value of new at that threshold, at that point, you're wasting money trying to limp along a building that is seventy percent of the cost of new. When you get to the point where the replacement or the repair cost is more than a hundred percent of new, that's hard for us to encourage you to just keep putting money into it, that's why we're making that recommendation.
So what is our percentage, if we're making?
You're, you're most likely more cost than it would be to replace.
So we're over a hundred percent of new cost?
Most likely, yeah. Part of that is, we don't know what's under the slabs, so we would potentially have to take out every concrete floor, bring in new fit. All that kind of stuff is just not worth the money that you would put into it. Especially for a facility that right now functionally doesn't meet what you all would prefer it to be.
Okay. Moving on through performing arts area, next one. So structural, same
Sorry, can I be clear on one quick thing? Those were preferences, have we had anyone decide what our necessity is? Based on, right, like, I know that those are their preferences, is that, do we align with what is needed?
So what we would do in the next steps
Like wishlist versus a want?
Right, there's a wishlist versus a needless, and I'm just wondering, I recognize it doesn't meet the preferences, but do we have any idea about the actual needs or what we'd be?
I think the idea behind that was simply to say, if everybody said functionally it's in great shape, it does what we need it to do, that lends itself to the conversation about the cost for replacement. It really wasn't an analysis of the priorities of education or anything.
Well, I guess, I guess that was more a question for Wendy, have we been able to look at those preferences and compare them to what we feel like are actual like needs? They're aligned, okay, great.
Okay. Yeah, same conditions in performing arts structurally. Dave, maybe you could talk to this. One of the biggest problems with the footprint of Performing Arts Center is trying to meet current ADA requirements.
And there's several of those. One is the ramps in the building are too steep, they don't meet current ADA requirements. The width of the corridors are way too small. Really where that applies is at these ninety-degree turns in hallways, the ADA has very specific requirements for those changes in direction. I'm not sure if you stood in there and seen class change, you know how challenging that can be. And the problem is, because they're so steep, the only way you can fix it is to go longer. Or to add lifts, which is just crazy, we would never encourage you to do that. So the problem is, in the footprint you have, you would either lose classroom program to free up more square footage to make it ADA compliant, which clearly isn't an option. Or it gets bigger. But in the footprint that you have, there's just no way to make it work and maintain your, your current program or your
And they're already short of classroom.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, quickly on that, again, yes. This was just to see will of work in the space, so there could be needs versus wants in here, but the next step will be going into programming, where we further define spaces and we make those determinations. Black box theater that could be multi-use for that faculty meeting room that was suggested. Several audience entrance, better for guests to come. The pit in the basement It doesn't work, it's student safety concerns, because it's just kind of
Because they have a lot of adventures there.
Sound system, soundproofing classrooms and practice rooms, storage, instrument storage is just, it's cramped, and then natural light.
And you said very quickly, so I want to emphasize, you said, we're short a classroom. Like the theater and the orchestra have to share.
Correct.
And that's not meeting our needs.
Correct. So we even talked about with them that there's an opportunity to do a black box addition and another classroom addition. And so there could be additions, but then we get back into the structural situation, and then it still doesn't address ADA. And so that's why our recommendation on this as well is to start and replace it.
Any idea on the percentage here? Are we like a hundred percent of cost of new, or seventy percent, like what would that be here?
Our gut tells us you're in the same ballpark. Because it's the same construction that we see in the administration area. The auditorium is a far more significant space, and they're inevitably more expensive. You've got structural tees, so it's concrete at the roof, which is not great seismically. So that's more challenging than the administration area or the music areas themselves, which are non-structural tees.
And the foundations, they need to be retrofitted as well.
Yeah, so you'd have to put helical piers around it to support it, and because the building's already there, you're coming inside the building in areas to run these piers down through the wood, that's very expensive.
East wing. Scott, structural?
So the east wing, from a structural perspective, specifically structural perspective isn't as bad. It's got a steel joist roof with, and those connections are easily modified to make them able to resist seismic loads. We can attach them to the walls with certain detailing, we've done that a lot, and contractors know how to do that. The floors and whatnot, they're heavy, the double tees, those connections would also need to be remodeled to make them seismically up to code. And the walls, there's a lot of walls in this one, they may not be reinforced properly, but there's a lot of them, which makes it easier to retrofit. And it's boxy, so the shape of the building is easier to deal with as well, from a structural perspective. Now, there's other issues as well, so I, it's not a replacement, but it would be a heavy remodel type of situation. Structurally, but there's other issues.
Can we go back two slides to the floor plan?
Right there.
So this would be really helpful for you to understand, that picture was taken on the second level, kind of in this area, right?
Yes, second level here. This is the second level.
Yeah, you're on the third level.
Yeah, that's the third. I didn't put the first.
Oh, you're right, you're right. So this area down below, we renovated it, but only a light remodel. So now if we go in structurally to retrofit it, this is the second floor above it, and you can see there's no access to the footing and foundations that are down at that first floor. Right? So there are ways we can get to that and retrofit it, it's just more expensive because it's hard to get to it, right? And that area, Scott, as I recall, was structural tees there, and then we were open with joists over here.
The roof is open.
Metal deck and open, which is lighter and easier to deal with.
This building also stair steps as you go up the hill, and that, with the access to upgrade the foundations makes it very difficult. And plus, I think this south end is next to the Thunderdome?
Correct.
The north gym, and that makes it very difficult to access as well for updating the foundation. So there are different challenges associated with upgrading this building.
There are options for you, though, that this provides that the others don't, I really quickly point that out. If your decision was, we've spent money on the I wing or where the sped unit is, we don't want to waste that money. You could remove the CTE portion, the shops, and now you have access to the exterior perimeter, being able to do the seismic upgrade without doing any harm to that interior that you just improved, right? And then some other retrofits that you can do on the second level, and we can address some of those issues. That would give you access to it to maintain it. If you chose not to move the CTE portion, you wanted to leave it, we would have to figure out how to get down an entire floor and not mess up your sped unit to get to it, to be able to stabilize that east wall.
While you're here, I can talk a little bit about the function, what we learned. Basically, they said, we can work with this footprint, we, with some lighter remodel. You've got tons of closets here, you've got storage within storage within storage, you've got ceramics has come down, has storage here. These teaching classrooms for the shops are too small, and so they'd like more of an enclosed yard out here, a secure yard, but within the footprint, we can make this work.
I want to say in the previous meeting, the third floor just has to come off.
That's the next slide, yeah, go.
I have a question. I was just curious, just having been in there, does, does it meet ADA? It's a narrow hallway, it's my question.
There are ADA issues in the floor plan, and there are ADA issues vertically. Right now, you don't have an elevator to get from the sped unit up, right, or from the shop floor area up to classrooms above. So that would have to be addressed. There are a lot of very narrow hallways and narrow access points into restrooms that have some ADA issues, so if
When you're saying there are options, though, are you saying there's a way we could make these spaces ADA compliant?
Yes, it would impact some of the number of spaces, right? We would have to widen things out, which means we're gonna impact some stuff. So it would have to be, work with staff to decide, where can we take some of that footage to make it work?
But those classrooms are all small.
But the elevator is really tricky. If you remember, we looked at adding an elevator a little while back, and the problem is getting to that lower level, you're having to excavate in dirt inside the building down about fifteen feet, plus an elevator pit, it's about eighteen feet deep, which is pretty tricky to do.
And then, being a project, we have to displace all those classrooms for a long time and find somewhere else for them to go.
And the other thing that's important here, Chad alluded to it, is we've there's investigation that still needs to happen before we come to you and say, here's exactly what needs to happen, right? We assume there's masonry that probably has ungrouted cells. But because of the scale of the building, we can go in and spot walls open and grout them and cover it up, so it looks good, it's still functional, but now we've made it seismically sound. But we would need to do some investigation to determine the extent of it. Is that fifty percent of the walls, or is it a hundred percent? We just don't know that part. But we feel like we have time to look at that building and give you a real clear answer. The admin area, the performing arts, we don't, because you're, right now, your contractor's spending money putting new stuff all around that. And if we then go in after investigation and find, oh boy, let's tear it out, you're now wasting money that you just paid to have built. Right? So that's the piece that's really driving the conversation.
Okay. Next one. Already kind of talked about this, yeah, so we'll go over it fast. Accessibility, shop space, teaching spaces are too small, storage not functional. Shop size is adequate. Studio instruction space is tight, so, next. So our recommendation on this one for the east wing, like you said, we don't, we haven't observed as severe of conditions as the other area, and so there could be, and because it could work in that footprint, let us take some more time to explore it. Get some x-rays done of the walls, possibly dig down of the foundations, see what we found, to determine how much needs to be done.
Is there an idea, can you give us an idea on how much it costs to investigate that?
The challenge here is, we, this is really fast on our end, and so we've given Chad some really high-level potential risks. But we would hesitate to give you anything that you could really sink your teeth in and share it with anybody, we're just not confident in the gathering. What we don't know is, do we need to x-ray every wall, or can we go and find some other techniques to figure out how to do it that's less expensive? We need to look at the roof connection to the walls and make sure we have that diaphragm tied in, we haven't been able to verify that. So it's hard to give you a real good answer.
Or do we x-ray ten percent of the walls and if they're all fully grouted, can, do we assume there's more, or do we x-ray?
Right.
Well, piggybacking on her question, it's gonna be expensive and time-intensive for you to even investigate. I think we have to determine, do we even want to go down that route? Or would we feel we just need to do a new rebuild anyway? Because if we are leaning that way, there's no point in you investigating.
What we do know is that that's the same vintage of building. So that doesn't help the argument that it's somehow built differently than the other areas, right? It was all built at the same time. Our understanding is the auto shop area, those pieces were, I think, built by staff back in the day, if I heard right.
Oh, that's staff, literally built that portion of the building?
That's the
That's the going
The going history tape.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't know what that means, they could have done a fantastic job, and it's awesome, you just don't know.
But it was same, it was part of the original construction or no?
My understanding is those shops were added, just the shop bays were added on later.
The shop bays were added later.
They were there when I went to take you.
Yeah.
I graduated in ninety-two.
Oh, cool.
So, I don't know, somewhere between seventy-eight and ninety-two?
Eighties is what, I saw in one report that it was done in the early eighties.
The school was built this, seventy-four, seventy-five?
The original was in the seventies.
So I think if you were just to ask us based on our gut, we would tell you it's likely it's following the same pattern as the admin and the performing arts. The reason that we told Chad we think you have a little bit of time, is you're not building right next to it, so you have a little bit more of a window to investigate if you choose to. The other areas, you're literally spending dollars right now to encapsulate it, and it doesn't make sense to do that, and then potentially throw it away.
Isn't true that the parking lot that's adjacent to this wing had some issues, and we had to go in and do something with the soil?
We had to break and pave it on that east block? We had to bring in some extra soil before we paved it.
It was just extra soil, it was just settling?
It's that expansive soil that got wet.
That's what I'm just wondering, but isn't that the same soil that's
Yeah, the whole site is that same soil. And it's great to tell it's wet. So when they took off the asphalt that was there before, and it got wet, it created that issue that
Okay, quickly, the cafeteria.
There are issues with the cafeteria.
I like that the bright spot has cracked up not in Thanks for putting in that potty.
Now, this is the good part of the conversation, though. At the end of the day, she'll be like, okay, there's a wind, so.
The good thing is, it's a single-story structure, with a steel roof, it's lightweight. It is, there's a boiler room underneath it, so there's a concrete slab. And not a lot of sign of settlement in that area, they would need to be upgraded, but They would need to be upgraded, but it can, I think can be, again, further study. This is a cursory review, but it's really quick. So we would need to get in and do a full study on it to make sure that we understood every nook and cranny of it. But, you know, with the roof being steel and the deck being steel, the attachments are easier to make from a contractor's perspective. They're easier to detail, they're easier to engineer, and I think it's doable.
There's two other pieces we need to add to this though. The heart, the mechanical and electrical heart of your entire campus is directly beneath that floor. So the cost of replacing this is not even worth talking about. I mean, you would shut down your home. It just is not an option. Now, the great part is this is big, large, open areas, so the number of spots we have to touch are far fewer. When you look at the I wing, there's tons of walls and we would have to touch every one of them. Here, there are these massive spans, so we fixed the walls on the exterior, we checked the roof deck, and we put helical piers to the fittings and foundations and maybe some slotted walls that we had some grout in your setup. So this is a spot where we feel like it would be a bad idea to do a full replacement.
And functionally, the footprint meets.
Yeah.
Thanks for ending.
Open concept, expansion, increase seating, reconfigure variety of serving lines, natural daylight, dining versus cafeteria, grab and go. Go back to the floor plan real quick and I'll kind of show what all that means. This kitchen is bigger than it needs to be. We don't hear that often, but it's bigger than it needs to be. So this could come back, we could do some different serving lines. The open concept, the stage is a wasted space as well that's being used as storage. This is your new courtyard over here with academic wing. So the open concept is having a pathway into here and what they would love is to open this now into the new commons area.
Which is not difficult, something we could do pretty well.
Okay.
Yeah, so what that means for us is this is the area we would encourage you to spend the money to do that investigation on. Based on the size of the space and how open it is, I don't see that as being cost prohibitive at all. But it would have the potential to save you a lot of money by figuring out the extent of issues there that we need to address.
Okay, so, yeah, keep going. That's our recommendation. Take some more time to understand that, but likely upgrade it and keep it in place. Then this is just a summary. Replace administration, performing arts, further investigate east wing and cafeteria. Start design now on administration, performing arts. The reason we recommend that, Dave touched on it, go to the next one. Go one more. So this is what the campus is going to look like next January, once this is, the current phase is done. This is the amount of the performing arts administration that has to be moved somewhere else. If it goes here, if we're spending all this money to put this in, or this needs to be repaved, does it go here? We need to figure out what is, how it's going to be so we can, Dave can do his magic to figure out how this best works before spending the money to put that in.
We're even building a new stair tower on the south end of the existing admin, so there's an exit there, right? So if then the idea is tear out the admin, we build that whole stair, we put on a new roof, and all of that would come down. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to spend that money there at this point until we know what you want to do on the other.
Okay. Is there a question?
Questions?
How much would that part cost? So you're recommending that we do that right now? What is the dollar?
For the new construction.
Not that.
Admin and performing arts, yeah. Depending on, you know, if it's going to be included, black box, depending on what the program, depending on how much bigger, we don't know exactly. We haven't got into programming, but based on current dollars for new construction, you're going to be twenty to thirty million likely.
If, well, we can answer this question, but one of the concerns they have right now is where their admin is right now is too far detached from one of the academic wings and where their needs are. Where would you even consider putting the admin?
We will get into this in phasing, but I would think you tear down performing arts and you put a closer over here.
So the only, that's one option. The challenge is you have two entrances that are main public entrances. You have the student entrance at the northwest corner for bus access, right? And then you have your main parking lot where everybody else is coming from. And typically, we would put your admin as close to the public access as opposed to the student access, right? And that becomes your secure entrance. Right now, if you walk in where that secure entry will be, you walk by counseling and about thirty feet down a hallway before you even get to Moe's admin area, right? That's not ideal for a secure entry, best of you all on how you would supervise it. So we would have to work with Moe and figure out functionally in the space how that works. Our initial approach would be to pull it down to the south and have it right by that entrance where there's that direct supervision. You just have to decide whether you want that at the north end or the south.
So basically, pill in the area where the academic wing used to be, right? Is that kind of what we're thinking?
Maybe down, down in here if you're talking?
No, so what I'm, I'm spitballing without, it's been a lot of times, so don't hold me to this.
This is draft and we're not going to quote you.
Absolutely. I'll write and I'll erase. If there was a way to take the admin out of that area temporarily, I would, I would put them here. Because that, that is your front entrance. It's already built and it's there, right? So getting counseling out of the way in that primary role and putting admin in front of it would go in that spot. So if you moved them out and did that demo, you would be able to do it. It may be advantageous to do performing arts up here as a disconnected building, so it's standalone. Acoustically, there's some benefits to that. Access for public, and they're not in the rest of your building, there's some benefits to that. And the limited disruption to your current function while we're doing that, there's a lot of benefit there. So once you do that and this piece gets torn down, now you have the ability to temporarily relocate admin, then tear down admin, keep the building functioning and put it right where you want it at that point. That's my first blush way I would probably look at it.
And we're lucky at keeping similar-sized auditorium?
We did hear that very clear, but do not want to decrease the size of it.
There's a lot to think about.
And I think it'd be helpful as we're having that conversation, Moe talked to us too about it, you know? And here, as you're hearing us, like your reactions, I mean, I know we're alike.
Yeah.
I see a lot of value in drafting the plans to make the decision. I agree, if we're already there, you'd hate to build a parking lot and close up things that then we're going to just reopen in a year or two.
How soon do you need to know from us? Like tomorrow, yesterday?
Parking lot work is going to start in. The design, if you guys said today, go on a design to finish that, the programming, the staff and everything else, you're probably looking at nine months of production time. So if you imagine the contractor's building to be done with that new work next year.
So you're talking nine months to do a full design?
You're talking just the design portion?
Yes.
That's a hundred percent construction, ready to go to permit. But if we could get far enough long in concept and schematic, the first phase is we could be done before they start that work. You could, you could know what's going to happen.
Yes, what I'm getting at is the contractor is on schedule to move through that area. So if it takes us nine months to finish documents, it takes us month and a half, two months to just figure out very simple crayon sketches of what we're doing. And that's when we can tell the contractor, oh wait a minute, don't do this part. So we want to try and solve that problem before they're standing there with a track or ready to go or we're wasting money really fast. So that's the only reason I would say yesterday is to make sure we don't leave in that spot.
Now, didn't we already give some approvals to start the design? I thought we did that.
That was the.
And then, and then you're supposed to decide if we're moving forward today. Yesterday.
So I just asked.
Once you get this information, then you use this information to make that decision and then I would.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
So one piece of consideration is when the original RFP for V C P O was for the entire rebuild, so we would not have to go out.
Okay.
So that is one thing to keep in mind.
Okay. So we can, we could literally have them get started tomorrow.
You literally could have them get started.
And the other, yeah, for, for them to put together a fee proposal for this, they needed to know a little more, so between now, we now know.
And is this something we have to vote on? Or since we've already done RFP and the score, that we can just give the directive?
I don't think you have to vote, I think it's just a directive.
How does the board feel about giving the directive to go ahead and start on, on plans? Or are we talking just performing arts and administration?
I think you just do the plans for all of it and then you're going to start deciding which parts you can do and then, and then you work with a contractor to figure out the phases of that.
One suggestion would be the performing arts area that is, needs to be replaced and you guys approved the study of the other areas to determine seismic issues.
Yeah.
And then you could decide if you want to pay us to actually go design a solution after we've done that initial just seismic study.
I don't want to pay for a seismic study at the end.
I think your seismic study of just.
And the east CTE, that whole area to determine whether or not you have a major issue or it's just light renovation.
I don't believe in the, I would be like renovation. I've been there, walked the stairways. I know how important it is to get an elevator in there. I know that we aren't ADA compliant over there. So my, my recommendation would be to do plans for the whole thing, but study the cafeteria.
Yeah, I think that's what I would really encourage.
Okay.
Is the board okay with giving the directive to start working on plans for the whole thing and study the cafeteria?
Yeah, you have to.
Okay. There you go.
We get to work.
Almost yesterday. It was pretty close. Close as we can get to the school.
Okay, before we leave, let me just, really quickly, we have quite a few items left in our study session that we were not able to get to. We're going to go ahead and just move those to after the community connections portion of our meeting, but before our business items. So we will still go over items nine through fifteen, just later in the business meeting. Nine through fifteen.
I'm moving.
That's it. Okay, we are adjourned. Now you can put some. Late night back?